Open our board trustees meeting for this evening. I now call the board, let us all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Let me be to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This remains standing for a moment of silence for our former service member. Welcome everyone again, thank you for being here this evening. As a reminder, the board meets only once a month for the summer, we will revert back to two regular meetings a month beginning in October. This is going to be the last time that we are going to conduct the board meeting in person via Zoom. If in the future we are required to go back to conducting remote meetings, we will be ready to do so since we now have the technology in place. The first item for the evening is board approval of a volunteer firefighter, Ryan T. Moody. Assistant Chief Thornton, is the member here?
Yes, Mayor.
If so, please ask him to stand up, please. Mr. Thornton, can you do some background information on the firefighter?
This is the mayor, board trustees. Ryan Moody is the young brother of Chief of Department Devon Moody. He is a 2021 graduate from the Garden City High School and wants to continue the tradition of service in his family. Joining his brother and uncles, he is eager to learn firefighting and help the residents of the village. Ryan will be attending the Southern New Hampshire University in the fall.
Congratulations and thank you for volunteering your time. I will now ask for a motion for approval of the firefighter. Do you have a motion?
I'll vote.
Do you have a second? The motion is passed, no extensions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now administer the oath of office for Sergeant Steven Tui and Lieutenant Thomas Friedland, who are being promoted. I congratulate you both on your promotions as I know that you are both dedicated and earned this great recognition. I now call on trustee Delaney and the trustee police commissioner to administer the oath of office.
Before I do that, Mayor, Commissioner Jackson, can you give us a little background on both of Mr. Tui's, I should say Lieutenant Friedland and Sergeant Tui?
Thank the mayor and the board of trustees.
Thank you. First, I'd like to announce Lieutenant Thomas Friedline, who is a 27-year veteran of the Garden City Police Department. During those years, he has served in the patrol and the traffic enforcement divisions. He was promoted to sergeant in 2017 and was assigned as a patrol supervisor as well as a supervisor of the traffic enforcement and motor carrier divisions. Throughout his career, Sergeant Friedline has been the recipient of numerous departmental awards as well as the Nassau County Municipal Police Chiefs Distinguished Service Award, the American Legion Award and Order Award, and the Town of Hempstead Police Service Award. He's a cop's cop and he's here with his wife Lisa and daughter Abigail in Little Suffolk County. Sergeant Steven Tui, he's a 22-year veteran on the Garden City Police Department after three years with the New York City Police Department. During his tenure with the Garden City Police Department, he has served in patrol division. Throughout his career, he has been the recipient of numerous departmental awards as well as the American Legion Award and the Police Officer of the Year Award. Sergeant Tui lives in Suffolk County with his wife Nancy, sons Ryan and Cole and his daughter Kira. And one thing about Officer Tui, well now Sergeant Tui, he was a person who always knows everybody on his post. We have something going on, we always go to Steve Tui. He's also well-known for fixing a horse that was damaged by some young people a few years ago. So that's what he thinks of the community and we're glad to have him.
Can I just raise my hand again? I, Steven Tui, I am a fellow. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police lieutenant of the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police lieutenant of the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as the police commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed. Congrats. Sergeant Tui. Do solemnly swear. I, Steven Tui, do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police sergeant of the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police sergeant of the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as police commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you appointed.
You guys, congratulations, both of you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I now call upon the department heads to begin with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. On agenda number seven, I'm looking for indemnification of park commuter tenant Thomas Passano while he was in his duties involving an accident in his litigation. I'm asking for indemnification for him. I also just want to mention, last week, we had two pretty fierce storms come through town and I just want to thank the fire department, DPW, and the Fox departments for helping me with preparation and their assistance during the storms. I think we fad out pretty well with the assistance of all four of us working together. That's all I have, sir. Thank you very much.
Chief Thornton, you're up next.
Good evening. On this evening, we have two things on the agenda. First item is number eight for the self-contained brain and apparatus. Currently, the fire department uses SCBA's. This is equipment used by oil firemen to deal with IDLH environments, that's immediate danger to life and health. Our current SCBA is a region end of life and due to be replaced with budget. The new New York State pricing came out, the SCBA's, we are requesting a decrease in budget for the cylinders and an increase in the budget for the actual apparatus. We're not asking for any additional money and in fact, we're also receiving a $250,000 grant in addition.
Chief, who's the grant from?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The real village treasurer, Irene Morgan, this evening?
She's on Zoom.
Is Irene?
Yeah, she's there. Irene, are you there, Irene? She's unmuted and she's there, maybe we could go back to her? Oh, there she is.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, tonight on the agenda, under finance, there is an item number one, appropriation of morning pension reserves. This amount includes pension payouts for three employees, one in the DPW department and two in the police department. The total amount appropriated will be $197,253. Also tonight, I'd like to update the board on recent communication that we received from New York State. As you recall, you know, the American Rescue Plan Act was distributing funding to all municipalities. We were recently notified that the funding that will be distributed to the Village of Garden City will be $2,293,000. As we previously talked about, they will be distributing this funding in two halves. The first half will be distributed later on this summer, in the next month or so, and the second half will be distributed next year. We're currently in the process of reviewing the voluminous guidance that's being issued by the Department of the Treasury in terms of guidance on how to use these funds. They're strictly limited in terms of what we can use the funding for. And also, we will need to follow strict reporting guidelines once the funding is being used. So more information will follow on that. Just wanted to give the board a quick update on that.
Thank you. Irene, Mr. Delaney, I have a question. Is the money that we're getting about what you expected or is it more or less than?
This was the funding that was expected. They had earlier on communicated that the funding would be about $110 per resident and they were using the latest census guidance to distribute that. So there's approximately 22,000 residents in the village and so, yes, the amount is close to what we had anticipated. Earlier on, the very first, in the early months, there was a different amount that was communicated, which wasn't correct because the amount had to be distributed to the county as well as the village. And so because the village residents are also residents of the county, you know, that number, you know, was eventually, you know, halved. The initial number was a double of the amount that we're actually receiving, but again, that was the wrong amount since residents are both Village of Garden City residents as well as Nassau County residents. So they now have to be split between the village and the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all, this room?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. DiMarino?
Do you have an update for the board of trustees?
Does that mean you really give me any insight by if there's any questions about the tent structures or are we going to be out doing dining? In particular, we've been getting a lot of calls about.
There's no agenda items, so.
The tent structures.
If that comes up, you'll talk.
We'll ask you to give a little. Very good. Do you have nothing really to give us there?
No, no things.
Commissioner Paul Blake here?
No, but there's, I think he has one item on the agenda number seventeen, sir, which is Mols, which is out of the operating budget. The board authorization is requested to exercise the second renewal year option contained in the competitive bid contract for Mols. That was awarded on April 25, 2019, to site one landscape sponsor company for boltwood Mols at the same prices and condition on an ASNE basis. It's just renewal.
And that's from Commissioner Blake, right?
Yes, I believe it's, it's under the award section, I believe it goes to Parks, yes, Parks and Recreation.
Next up, Mr. Gray.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. We work closely, my office worked closely with Karen Holtman in preparing the agenda. Other than that, I do not have anything from council's office to report. Thank you.
Last one, now please. Mr. Ralph Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the board and the public. Item number 10 on the agenda, sir, is a change order for emerging contaminated removal well number 15 and 16 to fill across industries. This is a capital budget item. As you know, we are putting AOP systems on all of our wells. The one, the wells in 15 and 16 also have an iron concentration problem in the well as such, there's an iron treatment plant there. When work was begun, they tested the iron media, removal media, and it was insufficient to work with the OP system. So the change orders to allow them to replace that prior to starting the OP, it's $141,900 addition. And this would bring the total capital for that wellsite to $7,637,900. And it fits within the existing bonds that's allocated to that contract. Number 11, streetlight pole painting. It's really two parts, to transfer funds and then awarding to Angler Electric Service. As you know, Angler Electric was awarded a competitive bid for the village's streetlighting contract. As part of the bid process, other items were included to establish unit costs so that we could avail ourselves of them when and as needed. One such item was for the painting of streetlight poles. There are approximately 126 light poles along the length of Franklin Avenue and to scrape and painting top pole is a $230 unit cost, $115 to the top, $115 to the bottom, which works out to $28,980. I'm asking for a transfer of $30,000 to cover this cost and to award to Anglers Electric Service at the unit price that's established in the existing competitive bid contract. Any unused funds will be released back to the village once the work is completed. Item number 12 is we're requesting board authorization for the village to apply for multimodal grant in around $50,000. Assemblyman Ed Girard sent this information to me on July 6th and the village is eligible under the categories specified in the grant. The grant was reviewed and approved by the village attorney's office and the details of where these funds will be applied was also reviewed by village attorney John Brone, oversees the road programs. Under awards and bid, 913 directional drilling, board authorization is requested to exercise the first renewal year option contained in the competitive bid contract for directional drilling that was awarded on June 18, 2020 to Island Directional Building LLC. Work will be performed at the same prices and conditions on an ASNE basis upon unit cost that is estimated to be approximately $45,000 for the current fiscal year. Item number 14, streetlight maintenance. Board authorization is requested to exercise the first renewal year option contained in the competitive bid contract for streetlight maintenance that was awarded on June 18, 2020 to Anglers Electric Service, Inc. Work will be performed at the same prices and conditions on an ASNE basis based upon unit cost and is estimated to be approximately $155,000 for the current fiscal year. Item number 15, rubbish removal. This is from the operating budget. You may recall that the June 3th GAT meeting, I requested that the board allow me to reject bids related to rubbish removal and to grant a temporary extension of existing contracts so that we had time to rebid those same items. The new bids came in and so tonight is requested the board, A, award a bid to National Waste Service LLC for items 1, 4, and 6 to be ordered on an ASNE basis. That is for mixed rubbish, broken concrete, and yard waste. Item number B is award to Ash and Rubbish Removal Company, Inc. for items number 2 and 3 on an ASNE basis. That is mixed sweepings for December to March and April to November. I believe the seventh of March sweepings would contain snow and salt. Item number C, award bid to Dragon Eddie Brothers Landscaping Nursery and Florist, Inc. for item number 5 to be ordered on an ASNE basis. That is mixed broken asphalt. Please note that all orders are based upon unit cost on five of the village clerk. The budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year is expected to be $390,000. Item number 16, sorted traffic signs. It's an operating budget item. There's a lot of different items here. I just don't have a list in front of me, but based on the lowest prices, we are awarded to three different companies. The first, A, is awarded to New and Signs, who is lowest bidder for items numbers. They're all in the agenda. All items are to be purchased on an ASNE basis. B is awarded to Garden State Highway Products, Inc. for other items. Again, all items are to be purchased on an ASNE basis. And item number C is awarded to Eberle Iron Works, Inc. for items 91 and 9899. Again, all items are to be purchased on an ASNE basis. As of previous resolution, all orders are based upon unit cost on five of the village clerk. I also just want to make a note that wells 13 and 14 have been proved by New York State Department of Health to go to system. That will probably occur as early as this weekend, once we get some samples back from the air iteration system. 15 and 16, 812 are still under construction and getting ready for testing.
Thank you very much. Ralph, quick question?
Yes, Mr. Sosio. Yeah. I'm just wondering on the awarded bids for the Jamaica Ash and the Dragon Eddie Brothers, was that a little bit also? I noticed in your other note here, the first one was a little bit.
Yes, the little bits were applying to each of the recipients.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from trustees?
I have a question, I don't know if it's appropriate timing.
Mayor, I'm wondering if we're going to hear anything from the third track committee. I understand you guys had a meeting with the IRR. I don't know whether this is the time for it, but is there been an update or what's going on?
We've been reviewing with our attorney on the items, so I really don't have too much to report other than what you already know. Thank you. First to Chester. Any other comments? This evening, I really wanted to be agenda a bit to now have a traffic study presentation begin. The presentation was made by Creighton Manning Engineering, LOP, regarding the Cathedral Avenue Traffic Copy Study. Could you please provide the introduction and then after that you can begin the presentation? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, board of trustees. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, board of trustees, Mr. Swazie and everyone else at the base. My name is Frank Phil Killton with Creighton Manning Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and traffic expert and over the past five months, we've been working on a traffic study to investigate feasibility of a road diet on Cathedral Avenue. And I prepared a draft final report which was submitted this morning as well as a presentation that translates, summarizes the report for everyone's viewing this evening and essentially what the conclusion of, you know, this meeting this evening and some of your feedback, that will enable the report to be finalized and then for the board of trustees to act if desired to then approach Nassau County for action. Cathedral Avenue is a county road, so there are two levels of government we play here, the local village, which is sponsoring this effort, this study, and Nassau County DPW, which owns and operates the road. At the least to start my presentation, I'm just going to show my screen. So before I begin, Cathedral Avenue project for me has been one that's been near and dear to my heart over the last several months. I've visited multiple times. It's something that I believe in greatly, having seen some of the statistics on the roadway, some of the speeding, some of the accidents that I've seen in the accident reports, some of the anecdotes from neighbors that I've met. And all of that has coalesced into this study along with the traditional engineering analysis that goes into traffic studies. So just before I begin into this, just so everyone's on the same page of what a road diet is, essentially what a road diet is, is it takes a four-lane road, two lanes in each direction, which is what exists on Cathedral Avenue today, and it transforms it into a three-lane road, one lane in each direction with a center turn lane and shoulders, very similar to what exists on Hilton Avenue, one block to the east. Why are we considering a road diet? What's the big deal? You can see in the images at the bottom that when you have a four-lane road with no turn lanes, you have upwards of eight conflict points at an intersection. When you diet the road, you've just reduced those conflict points by half. So the opportunity for accidents, particularly the accidents of severe nature, for speeding, for things of that, for that reason are reduced. The opportunity for significant accidents is reduced because the number of conflict points is reduced. Additionally, overall crashes in the corridor are typically reduced with a road diet. There's typically a significant reduction in speed associated with them. And they also tend to prevent what's called multiple threat collisions between vehicles and pedestrians. Imagine you're trying to cross the road. Car A, which is the car at the top there, is blocking your view of car B if you're a pedestrian. So you're thinking you can cross the road and all of a sudden, car B comes out of the blind spot and comes into conflict with that pedestrian who's defenseless in that moment. Additionally, they do tend to enhance overall quality of life. I know that's a difficult thing to quantify, but you can imagine the difference from having a lane of traffic right along the edge of the road and walking next to that road versus that car six feet over closer to the center of the road. Those are the types of things that are given back to all modes of transportation when you diet a road. A little bit of a brief history. Back in 2013, Nassau County adopted a complete streets policy. Complete streets is a policy that essentially requires all transportation improvements to include all road users, not just cars, not just drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians, you name it, skateboarders, everyone. Back in 2017, I was part of a preliminary traffic safety evaluation that was performed on behalf of some of the concerned neighbors in Garden City. We took a look at the road, did a toe dip into some of the early statistics that we had at our disposal at the time. During that period, in 2018, there was a traffic signal installed Eagle and Third. Back in 2019, we progressed the idea of a road diet. We met with Nassau County DPW early 2020, pre-pandemic, and from there, we discussed and outlined the scope of study. What would be required by Nassau County in order to effectively evaluate a road diet on Cathedral Avenue? And then in early 2021, this village and the board formally approved our scope to proceed with the work and here we are today. So Cathedral Avenue, I'm sure everyone is very familiar with this view. Here are a couple of statistics. To Nassau County Road, it's about 44 feet wide, edge to edge, with about four 11-foot wide travel lanes. No turn lanes, no shoulders, 30 mile an hour speed limit. There's an important Long Island Railroad at grade crossing, which I'm sure you all have been stopped at from time to time and I'll get into why that's important. It is virtually entirely residential with the exception of some important institutions, the cathedral, the middle school. And this road, interestingly, south of the village line at about St. Paul's Place is already dieted in the Village of Hempstead. As soon as you traverse the village boundary, that road is one lane in each direction with parking on both sides. So there is a precedent for this type of action in the nearby village and I'll explain more shortly. So our study area began at the north end at the Cherry Valley Avenue Stewart Avenue intersection with Cathedral and it continued south and included every intersection from that point down to St. Paul's Place, where the village line is. And we also considered the Long Island Railroad crossing, the at-grade crossings. And those images on the right are just two images, one at the north end near the rail crossing and then the image at the bottom is near St. Paul's Place where it goes down to one lane in each direction. Crash history. So Cathedral Avenue in Garden City has a severe crash history. There's 163 accidents over the course of the last three years from Cherry Valley Avenue intersection, but not including those accidents, down to St. Paul's Place. 56 of them have resulted in injuries, reported injuries. The statewide average for a road of Cathedral Avenue's nature, four lanes, undivided urban suburban environment, is 23%. So the statewide average is 23% of accidents would result in injury. Cathedral Avenue in Garden City, 56% of the accidents result in injury. There have been no fatalities, fortunately, but there is a significant accident history on the roadway. Cathedral Avenue and Third Street has gotten better with the installation of a traffic signal. But this 2019 data, from 17 to 19, does show a confluence of accidents right in the center of the corridor. What I did was I compared the crash history along the Cathedral Avenue stretch in Garden City with that in Hempstead. The ADT column is a kind of a fancy way of just saying how many vehicles are on this roadway every day. So back in 2019, pre-pandemic, normal traffic conditions, there were about 11,700 vehicles per day on Cathedral Avenue in Garden City. From St. Paul's Place down to Fulton in the village of Hempstead, there were 12,250. You can see that there is more or less similar traffic volume, a little bit higher in the Hempstead section. But look at the total crashes. You have significantly more crashes in the Cathedral Avenue section than you have in the Hempstead section. And the crash rate is several times higher as a result, despite the shorter length of road in Hempstead. So again, these are all indications that there are issues, very, very serious issues along Cathedral Avenue. Speed limit on Cathedral Avenue is 30 miles per hour. We looked at speed data from 2019, which is again, pre-pandemic, with the same ADT of about 11,700, and that is published data that came from DOT's website, New York State DOT's website. You have 85th percentile speeds between roughly 43 and 45. And we measured again in 2021, and we saw very similar results with 85th percentile speeds of 43 and 45, depending on direction of travel. 85th percentile speed is an industry standard baseline for really figuring out what the majority, overwhelming majority of drivers is doing. If we were to include the 100th percentile, you would get the person doing 90, which is really an anomaly. You're never going to cure a road to that level. That's where enforcement comes in, and education really. But 85th percentile gives you a really good understanding of your driver profile. People are doing almost 50% in excess of the speed limit. That's what it boils down to, based on both pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, or in the thick of the pandemic data. A little bit about the Long Island Railroad crossing, because this was key for our study. We know that there is the at-grade rail crossing. It shuts down the road in both directions for several minutes, depending on the time of day. We were able to get a pre-pandemic timetable. They've changed in the last year and a half to address the shortage in riders. But we were able to get a timetable from the fall of 2019. And based on the timetable, we were able to model, in our model, how many times the train crossed Cathedral. And we actually went out and measured how long the gates were down. And then we used that data and put it into our model to see, okay, what does this look like when the tracks, when the gates are down and traffic backs up? Because obviously, when you diet a road, that would be of a concern. You'd want to make sure that the road still functions when the gates are down. What we concluded was that in the morning, peak hour, and in the evening, there were four to five trains. And it depended really on the time of day. There'd be more eastbound trains in the evening, more westbound trains in the morning. In 2021, we commenced a pretty significant traffic data collection effort. We installed, you can see in the photo, those black tubes on the street that measure speed, classification, and volume at two locations. We also performed turning movement counts at nine intersections, the same nine that I showed you on an earlier slide. That was in March. And we confirmed at the time that schools were in session and generally normal session at the time. So we did capture Cathedral Avenue during school. But obviously, and this slide kind of summarizes it, we knew going into this that we would need to be calibrating the traffic data that we collected in 2021. We knew very well from the past year that COVID had had a significant impact on peak hour traffic trends and honestly, daily traffic trends. So we knew, if you look at the orange line, that line represents 2019 data, pre-pandemic. The yellow line is what we actually counted in March. So traffic was down. But it kind of followed the same curvature. It peaks at seven in the morning and eight in the morning, and then it kind of goes down around lunchtime, and then it ramps back up again in the afternoon. That's a typical curve that you would see on a traffic volume chart like this. So what we had to do, and this was done in close communication with Nassau County, because ultimately, they needed to support and buy into how we handled this analysis. We worked with them and appreciate Mr. Swazie's collaboration on that. He was very instrumental in getting everyone around the table and working this out. We adjusted our counts that we performed in March to the green line to resemble that 2019 data. So this study is based on 2019 adjusted data. So it represents a pre-pandemic condition as if COVID never happened. And I'll continue on as to why that's important. Our analysis then goes even further. So it's typical in traffic engineering. You don't just want to analyze what's existing. You want to look several years out into the future to confirm that, well, it's not going to, you know, it works now, but what about five years from now or 10 years from now? What we did was we looked at an analysis year of 2032. So what we did was we assumed that this type of improvement could go in in a year, if money's available and if it's desirable to the board and the county. But then we looked at 10 years beyond that. So that's the reason for the 2032. And in doing so, we increased traffic by 0.5% and compounded it annually every year up to 2032. And so that gave us basically an adjusted for COVID plus an additional 5% to 6% in traffic growth to look at a 2032 condition, conservative. That presumes that things will normalize back to a pre-COVID condition, which I think the jury is out on that. There's a lot of work from home that's happening. There is a lot of peak hour disruption as a result of work from home. Volumes are down during those peak hours on certain roads. And also, traffic would have to continue to grow further. So we looked at two scenarios. We looked at the road diet scenario. What do you do if you diet the road? And what do you do if you don't diet the road? If you just look at 2032 as it exists today, just 10 years from now. And we also assumed that Fourth Street would be signalized by then. Nassau County has approved a signal for that intersection. It hasn't gone in yet, but it would likely be in over the next 10 years. And we follow FHWA and ASHTO guidelines. Those are the two federal authorities that are important and relevant here. The image on the right is an example of our simulation software. So it looks very similar to roads, but that's a computer model. Put the data in and we're able to model existing and future conditions. So we looked at a road diet scenario. And specifically, we looked at a road diet scenario from Sixth Street down to St. Paul's Place. Understanding that the Long Island Railroad between Sixth and Seventh creates a little bit of a friction, we're working on the appropriate lane transition between Seventh and Sixth. But the road diet, in effect, would be from St. Paul's Place to Sixth Street. And what it would essentially be is you'd have a continuous two-way left turn lane that would transition to exclusive left turn lanes at intersections. Those are left turn lanes that you don't have now. And in addition, we assumed that the traffic lights along Cathedral would be coordinated. There's not really much coordination now on Cathedral Avenue. You might get a green one moment, and at the next block, you might run into a red. Coordination would involve synchronization and require county approval, but it's something that is reasonable to assume would happen with a project like this. This slide is a little busy, so I'll try to walk you through it. Essentially, what we're doing on the left is comparing the level of service. It's a metric that we use. It's alphabetical from A to F, A being best, F being worse. Comparing the null situation in 2032, which is the do nothing, to the build condition in 2032, which is the road diet. And you can see that generally, with the exception of Fifth Street, which is an unsignaled intersection, levels of service are generally maintained along the route. And again, that's just one metric. That's the metric for the vehicle. The benefit for the pedestrian and the bicyclist, and frankly, the driver too, we'll get to. But this just gives you kind of like one metric, what is the impact? And this is in the evening. Levels of service are colorized, and they are largely maintained if you were to diet the road. And I should have said at the beginning, and I think some people have heard me say this, the FHWA considers roads with fewer than 20,000 vehicles per day as potential candidates for a road diet. And remember, we're in the 11,000 to 12,000 range. So this was a good candidate from that guidance, but obviously, we had to do all this analysis to essentially prove it. These are our main findings. And when you're doing a corridor study, like a road diet on Cathedral Avenue, the performance of one intersection isn't as important as the whole length. Really, what we're talking about is travel time. How is someone who's at St. Paul's Place going to be impacted if he or she is driving north by a road diet? Essentially, what we're saying here, and what the analysis and model show, is that in the northbound direction in the morning, that's the critical period on Cathedral Avenue. You have a heavy northbound flow heading up to Cherry Valley Avenue. Essentially, the average driver would experience 48 seconds of additional delay on his or her route for the entire length of the corridor. So that's if you started down at St. Paul's and drove north. If you entered the corridor at Fifth or at Fourth, obviously, that number would be less. There are some projected improvements in travel time due to the traffic signal synchronization that would be included. But really, what's most important is the additional travel time. That's really what we want to zero in on. And when you're talking about less than a minute of additional delay for the average driver, that is largely imperceptible. Now, if you are an average driver, or if you're not the average driver, if you happen to be the one that hits the Long Island Railroad track, gates being down in the morning, your delay, your individual delay would be greater than 48 seconds. So that's the average. That's if you average all 900 vehicles traveling northbound in the morning. Their cumulative delay divided by that number, on average, 48 seconds of additional delay. That's the worst condition. So these are the main findings. Road diet feasible between Sixth Street and St. Paul's Place. Minimal impact during midday and evening peak hours. And I want to point out, the midday period that we looked at was between two and four to essentially capture the dismissal period of the middle school. We wanted to make sure we captured that in there. Really, what's governing here is the morning peak hour. So the midday was considered, but it isn't the critical hour. Minimal impact during the morning peak hours, except when the LIRR gates are down. So when the gates are down, you're taking two lanes and you're kind of squeezing them into one. So the logical thought here is, well, that stack of cars is going to get a little longer. And that is true, undeniably true. So if you are one of those people who hit that unlucky moment, your delay will be a little bit greater, perhaps two, maybe two or three minutes greater, so that the cycle can recover and the road can flush out. But again, we're talking about one hour of every day for just those moments that the Long Island Railroad is crossing. No roadway changes to Cathedral Avenue north of the LIRR tracks. That's important because if you're coming southbound on Cathedral, there would be no change to you until you get over the Long Island Railroad tracks. So the capacity, the lane geometry would remain the same. So that what you have there now, you'd have in the future. The diet would occur south of the tracks. So we're only talking about a stacking issue in the northbound direction. And no changes at Cherry Valley and Seventh Street as a result of this project. Q's are not expected to spill back to that intersection as a result of this. So. So this is kind of what a typical section for really the most basic road diet option is, which would be the paved shoulders. So this is at the Third Street intersection at Cathedral Avenue. You have exclusive left turn lanes that, north and south of the intersection, would become two-way left turn lanes for people turning into driveways, things of that nature. And then, in this case, you'd have about five and a half to six-foot wide shoulders on either side. So if you're a runner or a bicyclist, you have that space and that buffer between you and the car. Whereas today, you don't. If you're a bicyclist, you're in that curbside lane. You're shared with a vehicle going 45 miles an hour. That's option one. Option two would be, again, if desired, would be to use that shoulder for bike lanes. See this kind of all over. Again, it's just paint. It's just an option. And it can be done, or it doesn't have to be done. It's just an option. And then option three would be what we call curb extensions or sidewalk ball bouts. You see this a lot of times in the city where they carved out a larger section of sidewalk. And what that does is it physically narrows the road near the intersection. So a driver approaching the intersection, the view shed is tighter, and it naturally calms you and slows you down. And it's also less of a crossing distance for a pedestrian. So now you're in the physical road for a shorter period of time. So those are three options. And again, this is largely done with paint. But in the case of option three, you would be, you know, that would be the hardscape, concrete curve, sidewalk, a little bit more expensive. But it's an option. This is a rendering of that option three. Again, real rough. This isn't, you know, super detailed. But it kind of gives you the idea of, if you're the young lady with the stroller, you're in a safe zone, whereas right now, she's in the middle of the southbound lane. So next steps. Obviously, this is going to prompt a lot of discussion, a lot of feedback. I look forward to it. Happy to answer questions. But obviously, we need to finalize this study and finalize the conceptual plan. What option are we going with if we're going with any option? And then, I would believe that the village would need to formally adopt the road diet, if desired. And then that would be the mechanism to submit documents to Nassau County for review approval, identify funding opportunities, prepare preliminary and final design plans, and then implement. So there's a few steps ahead. Final remarks. Road diet is consistent with the village's quality of life initiatives and goals. It acknowledges calls for traffic calming. It's consistent with future neighborhood traffic calming studies. And it could be a potential template for future road diets elsewhere in the village. If there are roadways similar to Cathedral Avenue with the volume thresholds that we're talking about, it could be a way to build upon sort of a traffic calming theme and try to, you know, address the safety concerns that Cathedral Avenue seems to be plagued with. So that's it. Hope I didn't go longer than expected, but I'm happy to answer your questions and engage in a dialogue if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Are there any questions?
Yes, Tom O'Brien here.
Our trustee.
Great presentation. Thank you. Just out of curiosity, a lot of residents ask, you know, what's taking so long? Is five months the normal? Is five months the normal process, or did it hit delays that, you know, impacted your study?
Five months is a good estimate for a study like this. It's a pretty big undertaking. What we did run into was a little bit of collaboration delay, really, in getting everyone around the table during the calibration discussion for the data.
When you say everyone around the table, do you mean the county?
It took a little while to get everybody in line. The county was involved, for sure. By no means blaming it. It was just collaboration, and we had to Zoom. We weren't doing in-person meetings, so it took a little longer than that.
Yeah, no, I understand. Just one of the people were asking, so I thought I'd answer you. The other question is, oh, I just closed my thought. Oh, once approved, how long does the process take to get it implemented? Because I understand you have to go to the county for approval, right? So based on your experience, how long does that take?
County's going to look at this. I would think they're going to... We've had a good dialogue with them over the last couple of months. I would think they'd need a month to really digest this. And then, they would probably comment on it. They're not going to just rubber stamp it. They're going to critique a little bit of it. They're going to have questions for us. Possibly a comment letter. We'll address that comment letter, resubmit back. And doing so, hopefully, gain their approval. So I would budget two months-ish for that dialogue back and forth with the county.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on the interface with the other communities? You said that the other communities that come into this roadway are a center lane. Am I correct?
Village of Hempstead?
Yeah.
That's correct. So at St. Paul's is where the transition happens.
Right. And how do you study that transition?
Well, we counted the intersection of St. Paul's as well. So we know the level of traffic in the Village of Hempstead and in the Village of Garden City at that point. And we also put the rubber tubes in the Village of Hempstead as well.
But do they have a turning lane as well?
They don't have turning lanes. They actually have curbside parking. So they use their pavement lift for parking. Whereas, I don't think that's a desirable aesthetic here, given what you see on the side streets. There's no parking. So I didn't consider that, and I think it would be, you'd have to give up the center turn lane in order to realize parking.
I might, trustee Delaney. Commercial traffic. My recollection is that there is not a lot of commercial traffic on Cathedral. Am I wrong in that? Did you take that into consideration? That if we narrowed Cathedral, let force commercial traffic to other north-south roads?
It should not. The purpose of a road diet is not to divert. So you only choose roads that are good candidates from a volume standpoint. If you're choosing roads that have, around that threshold of 20,000 or 18,000, that's where you start getting concerned about people saying, you know what? This is going to be much different experience. We're at the lower end of the threshold. And commercial traffic, it's not that the lanes are going to be narrower themselves. The lane will still be 11 feet wide, which is adequate for a commercial vehicle. There are a few commercial vehicles out here. I think the percentage is between 1% and 2%, would be classified as trucks. But it's not overwhelmingly a commercial corridor.
My second comment, and I realize that you don't know the answers to this, but I'll just throw it out there. My experience, having served as a trustee for the last six years, is that with Nassau County DPW, it is very difficult to have them take any action. I'm just concerned that, did you have any feel when you were dealing with these folks, that they would be on board? Yes, they would ask some questions, et cetera. But are they going to be on board on this, or are they dead set against it? Did you have any feel at all from talking to them? Because our experience, at least my experience, having served on the Traffic Commission and being a trustee, is we've got stuff pending with Nassau County for at least the last six years, and sometimes even longer.
It's a good question, and I think that they are nothing but professional in the way they handle data and science. So they're going to look at this, and I've worked with Nassau County on it off a variety of different traffic studies for 18 years. They will give it its due. I think, from my own perspective on that, I think they want to make sure, given the community and how involved people are and how vocal people are, they want to make sure that if they're going to get on board with something, that the village is also on board. So it's their road, but it's traversing a village. So these are quality-of-life issues that can't be made in a vacuum, and I think that they are receptive to it if the village is receptive to it.
Trustee Bruce Chester. What exactly happens, you won't find me again, on Cathedral once the motorist crosses over the train tracks and is heading south? Is it narrowing at that point?
That's what we're working through. Obviously, you don't want to narrow it there because you don't want a spillback over the tracks. So there are a couple of ways to handle that. You could make the left lane onto Sixth Street be an exclusive left-turn lane, so that basically you're forced to go left. Or you essentially, and it's somewhat in place already today. If you go to Seventh Street heading south, there's a left-turn arrow in the lane on Seventh, which essentially means that the curbside lane, you need to be in that lane to go south. That would create the natural diet that we're talking about. So those are kind of the two options. But we don't want to necessarily merge it right there for fear of the LIRR tracks.
That's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
I have another question.
Hey, Frank. Sorry. Sorry. Hi. This is trustee Menudo. I'd like to just make a quick comment. I'd just like to thank Frank. The study is so very thorough. And, you know, it represents truly an effort that's taken really years and, you know, cooperation with residents in Central, CPOA, the Traffic Commission. And it's really great to see the level of detail here and the level of consideration and the science that's explaining really a terrible and unsafe situation that I think everyone who has driven on this road or has tried to, you know, ride their bike to town with their nine-year-old daughter, for example, will tell you that that intersection and that road is extremely dangerous. So I would also advocate for those bike lanes as well as we're talking. But, you know, fantastic to see the work and very excited to see it put to motion. And John, I understand that, you know, Nassau County tends to take a long time on certain things, but I don't think that should deter us for making changes for the better, number one. And number two, to go ahead and act that change and then look at other roads in town. You know, we all know about Clinton and other roads that could perhaps be also good candidates for the road diet. So Frank, I thank you very much.
So it's my pleasure.
Frank, my question is really about the documentation is necessary. If the board approves your study, right? What documentation do you have to produce to file with Nassau County?
Essentially, that same document.
Same exact document?
Along with the conceptual plan. So we've drafted some conceptual plans that essentially show the line work and what would need to be done. I think we would want to know what the village supports in terms of, are we talking about just shoulders? Do we want to approach the county with bike lanes? Do we want to do streetscapes? And you're not foreclosed on bike lanes or on streetscapes if you do just the paved shoulders. You could always do that in the future. So you do have some flexibility.
So you all have to specify the paints?
There you go.
Any other questions, comments?
I was just going to ask if I may. And again, Frank, great presentation, very thorough. Commissioner Jackson, from the police standpoint, do you have any comments on any of this?
I would like to get some time just to look at it. My biggest concern was, the trustee Chester's concern was, I'm very concerned about the railroad tracks. And also the backup traffic into Cherry Valley Avenue. That's a very bad intersection, so I don't want to make it worse. So I have to look at that a little bit. Also, the Hempstead area is a little different. Most of the streets don't cross over like ours do. So I just, you know, conceptually, I think it could work. I'm just very concerned about the railroad tracks, Cherry Valley Avenue. I'd just like to look at it a little more and see if it would work in my estimation.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks, Frank.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you stop sharing?
No, absolutely.
May I just, do I understand that Frank is going to redo this and come back with a formal study that we will then vote on? Is that the way it's going to work?
I think so. I think you have to review the study yourselves. Get copies of the study. I think it was just released this morning. Am I correct?
Right.
That is correct. To me, they sent our copies.
I just wanted to get an idea of the timing.
I haven't seen any documentation yet, so we have a chance to all read it. And, oh, we have more questions?
Right.
Then put the rest. We just got to the second, and I'm John, so...
No, no, no. That's my point. I want to make sure that the residents know that this is, Frank, we're not voting on it tonight. It's not finalized. There's a little more work that has to be done. And I'm in agreement with Louis. I think we should move forward, and as soon as we can, we will.
Just one piece of advice, Mr. Swazi. If you do reproduce that, I could tell you where to cut it off. There's a lot of analysis sheets that are not going to be of interest. You know, where you're going to have to pay for it.
Pretty thick.
It's thick.
Wow.
Yeah. So try to be as electronic as possible.
Do you charge by the page? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great stuff.
Okay, let's go on to agenda items. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Please conduct the review. State your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. You saw me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Amy Lawrence. Agenda item number 17, the mulch. Okay, this stuff really stinks. What is it treated, okay? What is the cost to apply, and then it all gets removed? It looks stupid. Now, if you're going to spend your money, why not address the litter? Litter is everywhere. And how about some village ordinance? Cigarette butts constitute litter, okay? $100 fine, $500 fine, second, $1,000 fine, third, okay? I mean, people just flip litter like it's nothing. That's crazy. Streets and sidewalks are filthy, okay? Does any administrator inspect work performed by the street department and the parks department? Now, where this mulch is going to get laid, spread, okay? Now, I do a lot of walking in the village. And you've got the planters, let's say, up and down Franklin Avenue. I mean, it's just dirt, okay? And then the parks department comes in, and they cultivate the dirt, and they leave in just stirring up the dirt. And around where they work, the sidewalks are filthy with dirt, okay? And then, when it rains, the dirt splatters off the sidewalk, and then the wind blows the dirt all over the place. And the air smells like dirt, okay? So, I don't think I brought, getting, okay, with the mulch and the parks department. The other day, I wanted to talk to Mr. Swazi, but he was at a meeting. And he had huge Conkel mowers mowing the grass right outside Village Hall. So I talked to Karen Altman, and I said, can you at least ask Mr. Swazi to see what's going on? I mean, it was like a battle scene. All you needed was the music, okay? It would have been like really a feature film, okay? The grass was so low, there were no clippings. So why are you wasting money cutting grass? Why do you cut grass anyway? I don't know. Just let it grow, okay? But they're cutting the grass. They're making a mess. Dirt in the air, dirt all over the place. And again, the grass was so low, you couldn't even cut it. So, I mean, again, getting back, does anybody, any administrator inspect the work performed? And maybe Mr. Swazi, every now and then, I know you don't get out too much, just look outside the window. Just see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Swazi, do you want to make a comment?
I do get out quite a bit. I also know Mr. Blake, the executive in charge of Parks Migration, goes out personally before and after. He also has some very good supervisors that I've worked with and who do a good job too. I do realize that individuals taste very, but I thank you for doing a good job.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Please come on.
Hi, everybody. This is very hot. I'm here talking. So my name is Jill Jordan. I live on 1193rd. I just moved here pre-pandemic. And when I first moved here, I was like, oh, the traffic this meeting is a bit of a concern to me. Then the pandemic hit, and it was kind of the best thing that ever happened to my locker because I didn't see the people speeding down like maybe X. But now we're post-pandemic, thank God, and this meeting is back. I want to thank Creighton Manning. I think they did such a thorough and wonderful job. I really appreciated the study. I was very impressed with the road diet. And I see that there's a lot more work to be done coming to the road diet, coming to the county. I want to help. I think a lot of people in the neighborhood want to help. What can we do? Can we reach out to the county and show our support? I would be glad to do so. That's one of my questions. My other question, since it is such a long road that we do have to travel, if the board permits, if you are impressed with the study, can we go ahead with more studies? Because the east-to-west streets are also a huge concern to me, especially in the central section. I wish I moved to Cedar because it's a wonderful lot, but I'm on Third, and people are going nuts going down that block. My husband has a joke about me and radar gun, and it's not funny because I'm really upset about it. Yeah, so what would be the decision on expanding the study in the future? It's basically one of my questions. And what can we do to help support Creighton Manning when they go to the county or go to the board is my second question.
Okay, a couple of things. Thank you very much. First of all, the county's been mentioned a lot. I just want to point out that I've been dealing with them a lot since November 2020. And they pick up the phone and call me back. I also have, the village has the support of legislator Schaefer. He's been very helpful with all the county projects, some that aren't to be discussed tonight with roadways. And the backlog on the Traffic Commission items is diminishing. So I enjoy working with them, and I know Mr. Fosato has a long history with them as well. So it's always helpful to send a letter of support. But I want to make sure that the tone and temperament is correct. They're really happy with partners. It's a big county, but they haven't paid attention to us when we asked them to. As far as the next study, there's a study proposal Creighton provided to me, which I provided to the board a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago now, which include all the number streets. There was an initial study teed up for the number streets, which only included Hilton to Cathedral. But of course, we want to go from Franklin to Rockway, so Mr. Fosato expanded the study. The difference between that study and the one we just did is that the roads are talking about Bill Jones. So any decision we make on them, we could expedite. I believe that's correct, right, Frank? And I also think that some of the information gathered on Cathedral could be used to supplement that study. I also believe that, as Mr. Fosato said, that some of his learnings can be applied in other parts of the village, which also have the same concerns.
That's great.
So Ralph, hi. Sorry. This is trustee Menudo. So Ralph, what do you think the timeline would be to have that study back in front of the board on the agenda so that we could vote on the east-west speeding study?
Well, the next agenda is, I think, August 15th or so. So that's the earliest time it can happen unless something else is suggested. I mean, the study's been in there.
That'd be great. I mean, I think I would definitely like to see that, whatever retooling Frank has to do to that proposal, I'd love to see that on the agenda in August so that we might pass that as well.
Just one thing to add. I have, I think, an email out to you, so we've gotten a lot of feedback. I have a, I think, an email out to you, so we've gotten a lot of feedback that other areas would like to be added on to that study. So hopefully, we can talk and we can also, you know, discuss how we can get more community involvement and, you know, people like Jillian advocating and getting others as well. There is feedback, very similar complaints from other areas of town. And I think a sense from a lot of people that that study should be covering the other areas as well. So let's see if we can maybe put something more comprehensive.
So that's a, that's a great point you bring up because I think that's also a matter of strategy, right? So should the other areas of town, because the forces and the circumstances and the traffic are so unique to those specific areas, should they also just have their own study, a comprehensive study of that area? It seems odd to me that we would try to do a catch-all of quote-unquote speeding all over the village. That sounds like a lot to chew on. Now, maybe we have Frank sitting in the room. Maybe we should ask him what he thinks the kind of best strategy to go forward with these projects are because it seems the, the, the things causing speeding on the numbered streets east-west will be quite different, for example, than, you know, speeding down Stewart Avenue or speeding down Clinton or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And trying to catch them in the same study when you see how detailed Frank's, you know, information is, it sounds like it's, it's a very inefficient way of trying to, you know, street by street and localize, you know, results. Frank, maybe stand up and let us know what you suggest.
Before you speak, Frank, can I just say, I was a little remiss in not pointing out that when I discussed with the mayor a few weeks ago, anticipating this, this exact question coming up, he did ask me to include a village-wide study for the same question. And I did pose that to Frank. We talked about it two weeks ago, and I asked him to be prepared to discuss it this evening because I thought it might come out.
So I don't want to discourage the board from, from taking on any amount of study certainly. This is all important stuff. But it, it is challenging when you deal with a significantly larger area because you have to set priorities. Obviously, you can't look at every single street in the village at any single time. It becomes a little bit unwieldy. So if you can define certain geographic areas that make sense, study them, you now have, because the way we approached it was to basically do a, come up with a traffic calming toolbox. You have twenty different strategies at your, at your disposal. And then you, once you identify them, you could take them and then apply them to the eastern section. You know, you now know what you're dealing with. Whereas if you, if you have the whole village in mind, you're almost like, well, we got to begin somewhere. Where do we begin? What's our first priority? And it's, it's unwieldy. So what I explained to Mr. Swazi was that if you have a defined area, complete that in a timely fashion, now you have a roadmap for the rest of the village.
Frank, my concern when I discussed this with Mr. Swazi was that we were doing the road study, common study for the Cathedral Avenue. But then I said, we have different conditions in the east, different conditions in the west. Just today, I saw a terrible accident on North Park Road, right? Caused by this new overpass where a car hit a motorcyclist and hopefully he survived. But it's serious stuff. And there, I don't know if making the lane modifications is going to help. I think we have to really reduce the speed. I mean, Commissioner Jackson can speak to this. And I think Commissioner Jackson has a tremendous amount of knowledge in traffic control, and he has to be involved in these studies. He really does because he understands exactly what's happening in every part of the village. And, you know, I'm from the west and I see it, I see it every day. It's terrible what's, what's been happening.
The high school is another area. We're getting a lot of complaints and we're talking about students, too, and processing. So I think we need to, as a village, look at, you know, what the spots are that we need to, I understand, yes, maybe it's not practical to say village-wide, but I think we need to take a look at the whole village and focus on where areas. And I think there are, just from reading your proposal, it looks like, for one thing, the cost is better if you do a larger study rather than doing multiple different studies. In addition, many of the things you're doing in that study, looking at different, you know, strategies to slow traffic, the pros and cons of those, that's information that's going to apply on Hampton the same way it would apply on Third Street. So I think we have to think about this as one village.
Yeah, for example.
I, I, yeah, I, I just can't disagree more with that. I really can't. And you got, you know, to let's take Tanner's Pond, let's take those, those streets, let's take North Park Road. They have an obvious geographical change to them that is resulting in crazy speeding, and it'll only get worse, right? But the, the things affecting that area that are driving those changes are completely different than the pass-through traffic issue, being in the numbered streets. So in order to focus the studies properly, I would think, and I'm hearing Frank tell, saying the same thing, you want to do a study for the numbered streets, study for, let's say, New High Park and all the way down to Tanner's Pond Road, and, and try to really identify the forces that are creating the issues in the different zones. I absolutely agree that there are different hotspots, but they don't all have to be one study. I think that just slows down any sort of progress. And I don't want to sound too dramatic here. I know Jillian said the road, too. We all have young kids in Central, and something bad is going to happen. I get texts, three, three or four texts at least per month, saying that, from a parent who needed to run out into the street to grab their kids before they got hit by a car passing through on the numbered streets east-west. I, I see everybody shrugging and sitting and moving around in their seat. I got to tell you, it's a real problem. And I feel like if we try to chew too much here or try to bulk it together with other studies, all we're doing is delaying it, and we're running risk for real harm or some real big incident to happen in Central.
All right, so I, you know, just to be clear, I'm certainly not looking to delay or minimizing any of people's safety concerns. I'm just saying there are other parents in other areas, and Hampton is the one that I, that I mentioned, that have the same concerns. So I think we need to have a conversation as a group.
Yeah, the other thing I was going to mention was Commissioner Jackson brought up in previous meetings that there's been national studies showing that since the pandemic, speeding has gone up. And for example, on Franklin Avenue, I think, tell me if I'm right, Commissioner, I think you've, since January, you've, your department has put out more than like four hundred and seventy tickets, speeding tickets, on Franklin Avenue.
Probably four hundred and seventy tickets. I think it's, so far, there's around six hundred tickets.
Six hundred?
But, but that's speeding.
Oh, okay. How many of those might be speeding if you were to estimate? Six hundred tickets, that's a lot.
We're talking about a quarter, about quarter tickets. Well, not all speed, like I always say, it's, I recall aggressive driving is one because I incorporate speeding about, about twenty percent, twenty-five percent, maybe a little more than that. Depends on the street, will be aggressive driving by places.
The six hundred tickets were all in Franklin?
Yes.
No, I understand.
I was just curious. The other thing is, the commissioner's taken some action around the town in the interim while we're waiting for these studies and all. So Commissioner, if you're able to, maybe you can just give a high-level overview of some of the actions you've taken around town with the signs and so on.
Sure. Some of the things we've done, first, what we did was we sat down and looked at a lot of the accident data, and that helped us assign officers accordingly. Also, some of the other things we do, we signed an extra officer to the traffic unit. We also utilized a decoy vehicle. The mechanics at the yard were able to take an older vehicle and help us rebuild it because we didn't really have enough cars to do a decoy. And they did a phenomenal job in a very fast time, so I thank them for that. And we've also did some work, like on New High Park Road. We, myself, Ralph, and the engineer, we walked that street and we made some changes there already at the traffic light. We also have, I think by middle of next month, hopefully have the indicator signs in. We also have two, a location on Stewart Avenue and a location on Rockaway that are good candidates for that, and they might be in maybe a short time after those two. They're on order now. So we've done a lot of things. We've had some, when we had a little bit of overlap time, we put two or three guys in the same area to concentrate with the blitz, as the mayor would say. So that's some of the things we're trying to do. And we're trying to move around quickly because if they stay in the same spot, they figure out ways is, it's tough. I said the other night, we had officers sit on the White Park Road, nothing, nothing was happening. Then he put on Waze and he saw that he was, he was indicated on Waze.
Yeah.
So he had to move it around. So it's a, it's, 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 you know, it's like a chess match sometimes, especially with Waze and Google. But we are trying to do some of the things. We're getting good feedback on it, on the decoy, moving it around as best as possible because you don't want to leave in the same spot at the same time again. We also utilize the speed sign, too.
Yeah. Can you explain to the residents who don't know what an indicator sign is?
Well, the indicator sign would be a sign of a flash of speed. It's like by the high school is the best example. That's a speed indicator sign. There's one on Clinton Road also. It just tells you what your speed is as you're approaching that sign.
I, I think another thing that we should give some thought to, which I think the PTA was very successful at, was the passing of the school buses. We had a problem, I guess about a year or so ago, and the PTA put out the magnets to go on cars. I think maybe one of the mailings that we could do, maybe deal with Carissa, and put a mailing out and point out, I think a, a lot of the speeding is done by village residents. I'm not saying it's all done by village residents, but if we just go after it and so that people would understand that speeding is a problem and maybe slow down a little. I think maybe a little PR effort on our part would be very, very helpful.
I think that's a great idea, John.
Yes, sir. Hey, listen. Sorry, I'll probably do it for sixty seconds, but I wanted to provide a little bit of human touch to Cathedral.
Can you say your name, sir?
Sir, Brian Marr from, I live on Fourth and Cathedral Avenue. Thank you again for the report and the support so far from all of you. I just wanted to give it a little bit of human touch, right? So I live right on the front line. So I'm, I'm the guy that's in the cars the second they crash, right? So I'm right on Fourth and Cathedral. I work out of my home, my kids, my wife, or whatever. So we're usually the first, we're there before the police, right? Just because we hear it. You know, some of the statistics, I just want to make sure that we're focused, right? There's one hundred and sixty-three accidents in three years, fifty-six percent are hospitalizations. That means that ninety-one hospitalizations a year, so average more than once every two weeks. I've helped kids from Garden City come out of minivans that were hit, coming back from La Crosse and St. Paul's. I've helped teenagers crying both inside and outside of Garden City. I've helped a kid whose bones were through his leg, a car that had gone a hundred and eighty feet on the sidewalk. I don't think they were able to save his leg. It's, it's, it's really, really tough out there, and I appreciate that everyone knows that. I know I'm preaching a little bit to the choir, but it's important for me and all the people in every section of Garden City that, that always ask me to try and represent them. So one of the things I want to, to remind this group is that it's not a central section issue. It's people going to the middle school, it's people going to the cathedral, to the pool, Garden City Pool, they cut across Cherry Valley, the school buses, there was an accident on a school bus. It's people walking the dogs, it's people walking the strollers, there was an accident not too long ago, and this dad had a stroller, and the car was upside down, and he was, he was fine. Everyone's fine. But seconds earlier, it would have been a different story. So, look, I have people coming to my house all the time. I think they're lawyers. I think there are people that have had an accident in the past that are poking around, asking questions about the intersection in this road. I think there's liability, maybe it's not ours, maybe it's not our company's. But I do know that for me, this is, this is literally life or death. And every two weeks, someone else is going to the hospital. And I know in my heart of hearts that someone will die if we don't paint this road. So I, I gotta implore us, it's, it's a can of paint. If it doesn't work, we'll paint it back. But let's please try and get Frank to get this finalized and get it done. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, could I ask Frank the question? Frank, is there a way to, to split the difference here? In other words, while you're finalizing the county study, could the village commence the numbered street study? And could we simultaneously identify, let's call them hotspots, with the commissioner and input from the community, and have concurrent satellite studies occurring, which basically is the facto village-wide study? But they don't have to be led at one at a time, do they? Do you have bandwidth for that?
I do have bandwidth for it, and I think one of the important reasons that you can progress this, I mean, because the neighborhood study is not involved county. So as long as you're on a village rideaway, it's your decision. You own the streets, so you could do that. New High Park Road, Clinton, those are, those are different animals because they're both county. Those would have to be kind of parsed out. But yeah, if you wanted to do a couple of different satellite areas all at once, you could do that.
And would that, that wouldn't be five months? Would you have a calibration alignment with the county? So we might be talking three months possibly?
Correct.
Open numbers in your mouth, just.
With neighborhoods, you're not as much worried with traffic volume as you are with speeding, crashes. You know, it, it's not as critical to know the volume as accurately as it was here. Cathedral's a commuter, commuter road, so we needed to, we need to get into that. So exactly, you'd be able to save a lot of time on that. And we're not doing the same type of modeling that we did.
But a few volumes you showed me, and that's usually volume this county, we're not talking about volumes.
The other, the other one, Brian had a point that I, I just wanted to kind of reprise a little bit. The, the road diets have shown to really reduce the eighty-fifth percentile of speed. And as I mentioned, it's, it's approaching forty-five miles an hour. Forty-five miles an hour is sort of the borderline between what DOT refers to as low-speed roads and high-speed roads. So forty-five mile an hour roads are designed differently than the forty and thirty-five. What you have out there right now is approaching like a de facto forty-five mile an hour road. Road diet, because you're, you're kind of only providing one lane in each direction, those, those drivers who are generally following the speed limit, the people doing thirty-five, thirty-four, because there are those people, they will moderate the person who wants to do fifty because that person doesn't have anywhere to go. Now, if they're the one percent of drivers who, you know, go down the center line, I mean, again, you're never going to cure that person. But there's a lot of drivers out there who are going forty and forty-two because they can't. The road is asking them to go forty-two. It's wide, it's not pedestrianized. So when you, when you push them into one lane, you're moderating them a little bit. And I, Brian made me think of that point that I did not make. I just want to make sure I made. Actually, I think.
Mr. Hawke?
By the way, greatly appreciate everyone's time looking at the road diet. I wanted to just give you guys a picture. Keith Hawke, I live on about thirty-two Cathedral Avenue. I just want to, if you don't mind, I'll give you some pictures so you can see some of these accidents. But I appreciate Commissioner Jackson's efforts in looking at different traffic tools that he has. But the reality is, I think it's a little bit beyond enforcement, the, the problems that we have. You have systemic excessive speeding, fifty percent over the definition of excessive speeding on Cathedral Avenue. As a result, the accidents are very trans. And you can see some of the pictures, you know, cars flipping over, very serious stuff. The road is screaming for a change because it is a high, it's a high-speed road. It is forty-five miles an hour. Eighty-five percent of the people do forty-five miles an hour on a road that's not designed for it. And I would really, I think we would all very much appreciate the residents, you know, moving as forward as quickly as possible. And what's just as important to us is, from the beginning, the idea was that this calming study, this, this tool would be used in other parts of the village. And I think it could be truly transformative. And I do think personally it applies, there's clear roads that it applies to. Washington, I mean, all these roads have the opportunity to, to learn and gain momentum and solutions without being so dependent on enforcement, which is, frankly, I live here, it's not working so well, you know? So, but anyway, I wanted to thank everybody and say my, my two cents.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Sniffen. I'm the dean of the cathedral. Just wanted to say a word of gratitude to the trustees, to the village administrator, to Frank, and to so many of my neighbors to look around the room tonight. My wife and I live at the corner of Fifth and Cathedral. My office is at the corner of Fourth and Cathedral. The cathedral, of course, owns four blocks of the stretch that we're talking about. And it is hard to put in words how traumatic so many of these high-speed accidents have been. I have been the first on the scene of at least ten of them. And when people have been in a traffic accident of this kind, it's not a bad thing to have a priest on the scene, but it is a scary thing for a lot of these accidents to have involved many of our young people from this village. As, as many of you know, the cathedral is in the process of implementing its ten-year As, as many of you know, the cathedral is in the process of implementing its 10-year master plan. We're significantly improving our campus for pedestrians, for children, for people with pets. And our largest program at the cathedral is called Cathedral for Kids. We have dozens of toddlers on the campus of the cathedral all the time. What we don't want to have to do is wall the cathedral property in order to make it a safe zone in the heart of the village. What we want to do is make the streets of this village safe for pedestrians and people traveling in vehicles. So we thank you for your work and know that all of the corporations allied to the cathedral support this project.
Thank you, Father.
Ben Stanley, Director and Director of the Garden City Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Mayor, trustees, first off, congratulations to all the new trustees on your election. We have quite a few speakers tonight on the, on the number of restaurant items on the agenda. So I would prefer that the restaurants actually speak for themselves. So I just wanted to do an introduction and Eddie, I guess, that you could start us off. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, Mr. Swobodan. Ed Davis, owner of Water Zoo in Novotny. We are extremely grateful to be on the long road back to a sense of normalcy. Certainly, it is not close, not by a long shot, being normal. The piazzas in the rear of our restaurants are still, are very much and still very much a lifesaver. Regulations have only been lifted for approximately six and a half weeks and we have a significant amount of guests not comfortable dining indoors at all. And with the Delta variant doubling, slowing of people getting vaccinated and the increase of positive tests certainly not helping. After such an unimaginable year and complete devastation to our business, to find out this evening's agenda has this potential, we've moved everything in the parking lot basically immediately without any warning. Was a real, real blow and quite frankly, very much taken back and stunned by it. We respectfully ask for the mayor and the board to please show some additional compassion to our small business and reconsider the abrupt stop, stoppage. And continue us, continue, to continue to allow us to extend at least to the fall.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, trustees, thank you for the next key. Like Chef Ed said, truly only been six weeks for this early, no time, no reason, that we're packed to full capacity. But, you know, being closed for about a year and a half, you could say, has really put a major burden on the restaurants. We've incurred a lot of debt, we've had to take out many, many loans. And for us to go backwards at this point, actually going to be a real hardship. I think that people do enjoy dining outside and it's just going to drive up customers to neighboring villages that are still allowing the outside dining. People really want to be at this time. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Jim Dickis, the better half, my better half, my beautiful wife Francine. Former residents of Garden City who just moved out about a year ago. And current owners of Revel Restaurant. Hello to the mayor and trustees and thank you for the opportunity for all of us to voice our opinion. And how this, this, this idea of, you know, removing our rear patios. And as Eddie and Chris said, I mean, what we've been through in the last year and a half is no secret to anyone. I mean, COVID has literally decimated and crippled the restaurant hospitality industry. We're all in debt, we've all borrowed money. We've all put our best foot forward to try to sustain it through these difficult times. And as Eddie said, we still have guests. I think, I think we revealed it's about 40% of our current guests come to Revel and Novita and Water Zoo and College Arrows because we have the outdoor dining. They're still are very uncomfortable. And even in that steaming heat today of 95 degrees, we had guests who refused to sit inside. They're still afraid. They don't know who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated. And, you know, it's a big concern. And, you know, we've all invested a lot of money personally. I think we have about $80,000 invested into the outdoor seating. We recently just re-landstated. Two weeks ago, we bought all new furnishings for the outside. And I think in all uncertain terms that if the village does take this away, I don't know personally how we could survive. I mean, we're talking about, you know, financial devastation, destroying livelihoods. We currently have 45 employees, 11 or 12 of them are Garden City residents. And I'd be happy to furnish their names and addresses, so you could verify that yourself. It would just be disastrous. So I'm asking, on behalf of all of us, that you consider at least extending this till the end of the year. And let's see where we stand with COVID. I mean, God knows, is it going to come back, is it going to take up again? And if we remove all these structures, then we don't have an option to put people back outside because they're gone. Thank you for your time and we hope for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Tom McCambridge, I'm an executive with the Albany East Organization. We're a garden city-based real estate company. We own and operate eight buildings along Franklin Avenue consisting of approximately 500,000 square feet. We pay annual village taxes of over $600,000 and annual school taxes of almost $2 million. And you've heard these restaurants here today, Revel happens to be one of my tenants. This is a very tenuous situation, right? And my main focus with the Albany East Organization is in commercial leasing. So I attract and retain all of the tenants in our buildings. And part of my marketing effort is the vibrancy of our downtown and the availability of shops and restaurants. So to make this, you know, what I feel to be a hasty decision, I think would have a detrimental effect. Could cause them not to pay the rent that they've agreed to pay, or at worst, go dark. And then we've created a vacancy that who knows when I'll be able to release or the other landlords will be able to release those spaces. So I just think, I would ask you to consider just letting these agreements go through their natural expiration. Okay? And let's see what happens at the end of that term. And furthermore, to, to be apprised of this, you know, by going on the website and seeing an agenda the day before, quite frankly, I don't think is in the best interest of anyone. We used to, years ago, trustee Delaney was a business liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. He would, he would come to our board meetings, we would collaborate together, we could, we could talk things out. So I would suggest that we consider doing that again, so that we don't have to come here surprised and, and have to appeal in this nature.
I appreciate your comments and appreciate all the comments from all the restaurant owners. Let me explain how this transpired so you understand clearly. I've gotten reports from department buildings and from the fire department about conditions that could put people's lives in jeopardy. And that's why we started to look at this very, very carefully, very quickly, because it's a tremendous liability to the village. I would like some of the other members of the board to address this issue. Mr. Gray, can you expand on this, please?
Sure, I'll refer to the board members first if they want.
Should we hear from the fire chief?
Yeah, let's hear from the fire and discuss.
I just had a quick question, Tom. And I know that Albany East is a great company, I go back to the Albany East. Were you able, I know it's tough times, but were you able to give them a break on their leases?
We did. We, we, we have Revel Restaurant in our portfolio and Panera Bread up at 1140 Franklin. They were the tenants that were most affected by the pandemic. We were able to negotiate a deferral of rent and, and keep the lights on in both businesses. But, you know, that usually comes with an extension of lease term. There are, you know, there are contractual obligations, we have to pay our mortgages.
I know.
So, you know, you just can't abate everyone's rent.
I understand. So I was just, yeah, yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Hi all, this is, this is trustee Manudog again. I'd like to say that I'm completely against this. Putting these small business owners through this sort of trauma right now is, I think, very unwise. We see, all you gotta do is read the paper, watch the news, you know, Albany is, is extending outdoor dining, the city's extending outdoor dining, okay? If there are issues that, that arise, whether it's from the fire department egress issues or building department COVID issues, we should resolve them as we did last summer and as we did last fall. And let this sunset in a, in a way that's comfortable for everyone. So if it's at the end of the summer or, you know, in, in the fall, whatever that the case may be, but just, you know, I do think it's kind of crappy that most of these business owners found out about this possible action. You know, the date before the meeting. I'm not sure if any of the other board members have ever been a part of a small business. Personally, you know, in my family, there have been, been many through the years. It's really, really difficult, I can't even imagine what they went through. And we as a board should be lending support to our local businesses. I'm sure some of you guys have been in Garden City long enough, you remember the recession in the late 80s. There were lots of empty storefronts in town and it was terrible, okay? We should do everything we can to help our people through the pandemic and it's not over and we should really help them.
I would.
That's all.
Yeah, I would, I'm also sympathetic to the small businesses and I think the issue is brought up by the fire chiefs. So why don't we hear the particulars on what the safety concerns are?
Let me answer.
Thank you. In regards to the fire department, our concern is from an access and an operation standpoint. With Kellam Lane driveway eliminated, this inhibits the ability for a fire apparatus to come in off Stewart Avenue and through the rear of 9th Street. This limits our access to the west side of 365 Stewart for aerial ladder to place it into a window or the roof with the same of 3, excuse me, the rear of Franklin Avenue. In regards to the other locations with the structures in the rear, these inhibit our ability to bring equipment and tools into the buildings as easily as it was done before COVID.
Could we hear Mayor for a moment? Building is all before we comment.
Could I just make a comment?
Thank you. Excuse me. The building department is concerned with some, a few items. We had some issues with stormwater runoff that was, some of the parking spaces were flooding out that weren't previous to the direction of these tent structures. Some of the parking spots, the handicap parking spots have been compromised or can't be used. We've gotten phone calls about near accidents on particularly where these, the concrete weights for the, for the tent, the road narrows in that position, in that particular spot. And we've gotten phone calls that there was a near accident by a person who called in. Also plenty of phone calls really in recently, in the last few months about just general sloppiness of the tents. That some of the residents were saying that they were concerned, that they just didn't like the way they looked, why are they still up? You know, they were complaining about the propane, the location of the propane tanks on the, on the, just on the pavement. Could they be moved somewhere so they weren't an eyesore, they were close to the apartment building there? So we, we received a lot of calls like that. We also became concerned with the occupant load that wasn't really considered originally, you know, when, when probably most of these merchants went through zoning. And they were approved for a certain occupant load which affected parking. So now you're, you're increasing the parking spaces that were necessary, you're compromising what was there. So those were some of the concerns. Again, lately it was a lot of phone calls about just general sloppiness and from residents that's claiming they've been here for many years, we don't want to see these structures here anymore. And it wasn't really the outdoor dining, it was really the tents that were bothering most of the, most of the calls that we received. Mr. Gray?
So is it a code issue or is it an aesthetic issue?
Well, it's a property maintenance issue, so it actually is. It's a, it's a village and a New York State code of property maintenance. When something is, is in ill repair or general sloppy conditions, it is, it is a code issue with the village and New York State.
Sounds like something though that could be rectified.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Let's talk about the legal arrangements to the outside for these restaurants.
Can I just walk it out, please?
No, let, let, can we just finish, Mayor? I want everybody to have a chance to talk.
Sure.
But let's hear the issues first and then let's see if we can solve them.
I was just responding to the issue.
No, let, let's, let's see if we can solve those issues after we hear what they are.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you, you know, you and the chief have summed up what the issues are and it's safety. And I did review a communication from the, the chief of the fire department, Chief Moody, where he says that he has these safety concerns concerning limited access. He states that the, the structures are hampering their responses. They're unable to get apparatus in to the locations where they need to get them in. And he also had serious concerns about the concrete barriers hindering access and not being able to get apparatus around them. We reviewed, obviously, the temporary licenses that were issued to these, these restaurants. And clearly, inside those agreements, there is a statement that these licenses are revocable at any time at the will of the village in its sole discretion. So if, you know, if it's your safety concerns and the chief fire department's safety concerns, you have the legal ability to revoke these licenses.
Is this the initial license or is this a renewed license?
This is actually a second renewed license. It was an initial, an initial, excuse me, an initial license. There was a first extension of the license and then as recently as February, there was a second renewal of the, of the license.
So, so in essence, to summarize, you know, the board is not averse to having businesses thrive. That's not the point. The point is safety. The point is safety of the residents and the patrons who come to the village. That's our concern and this is why we reacted this way because we got this information from the department buildings and the fire chief. This is our responsibility.
I, I understand that, Mr. Ray.
I just want to make one comment as well. Yes, it's very much a fire safety issue, but it's also a liability issue for the village. The structures, and it was an excellent idea certainly to try to help these businesses out at the time to let them have those structures to have, you know, the clientele come in. But from a liability standpoint, they're on built property, they're on the parking lot. And do their insurance policies extend coverage to those structures? Because they're not, they're not within the realm of restaurants. And so if some patron was to slip and fall within that structure, we already go. And I think that's something we would have to look at to see that as board, that that coverage is there for the restaurants. I mean, we all want them to succeed. There are all places we've been to, all these businesses we're talking about. We absolutely do. But we did have a serious fire in the village and we are concerned about that, again, and concerned about this liability.
I.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask if we could get something, some more clarification from the fire chief as far as whether there could be a remedy to the safety issues that can continue. Because I do, I'm not surprised that a higher percentage of people are still liking, you know, eating outdoors and it's a nice thing to be able to provide to residents as well as helping the businesses. So are there, what I seem to be hearing most about is the access issue created by the tent that blocks up the road. What can be done? Is there something that can be done to reopen the access? So if, God forbid, there was a fire in that apartment building, there would not be an issue with getting access?
Mary, just let me add to that. A thought on that, is there any way, well, I realize it looks nice. Is there any way we can allow continuing the outside dining, but taking that down so that in an emergency, tables can be moved quickly out of the way? Now they can't be. That's really the, 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 and I hate to pick on Revel, I don't mean to. But, but they have really blocked that area. Is, is there some way that they, Revel could continue to serve customers outside with a facility or an area that is not as, as, uh, blocked in or as, uh, permanentized or whatever you want to call it, that could be easily be moved? It's one thing having a tent on stilts where the tent can be quickly moved out of the way. It's another thing having cement blocks and wood and the rest of it. I, I think the answer is if, if we could be assured that those permanent type structures could be moved out of the way or this, whatever you want to call it, and, and just have something that's portable that can be quickly moved out of the way in an emergency, I have no problem with that.
Trustee Delaney, I think, uh, Mr. Delaney, do you have any photographs or descriptions? So people can see what actually was going on?
Exactly, yeah.
Let's see the photographs.
While we're putting, pulling up those photos also, could, could I ask both the fire chief and, like, what's, what's different about the tent structures today than the past year that they've been up? Why has it become a problem today or yesterday when you sent the mayor, um, some information? What has changed? Is it just, because what I'm kind of hearing is, and, and, and the building department comments as well is that we're kind of sick of it. We feel like it's over, let's get these things down. Well, I think we've heard enough testimony from the restaurants here that it's not over for them, right? They need a little bit more help. We're a month and a half or so away from this, this, you know, the end of the summer. Why the rush? You know, we've been dealing with it for, for about a year, a little more than a year. Why not let this sunset at the end of the summer and, you know, um, make them as, you know, correct obviously any drainage issues or anything like that? The idea is that, what has changed?
I could, I could just make one comment, Louis. Uh, now that I'm the fire commissioner, it broke my attention right away that the cement blocks are a real obstacle and that, uh, the fire department doesn't want anyone to lose their life in a bad fire in the apartment or those stores behind. So that was brought to my attention when I became fire commissioner. So that, I don't know, I don't know when the, when the cement bricks were put in. I have no idea.
Uh, Brian Donnie?
I don't mean, I don't mean bricks, cement blocks that you would see in New York, that block love Trump Plaza where Trump, you know, they're huge.
Brian Donnie, please, uh, use the.
No, no, I, I mean, my point is those, those blocks have been there for a year. Why, why yesterday did they become, you know, a major problem enough to alert the mayor?
Uh, the fire commissioner, uh, Moody alerted me that, uh, this has been brought to the attention of the town in the past.
If I could jump in here, uh, Louis is correct. Nothing's changed. This was all done a year ago. We had the fire department talk about this several times in public. We voted, we could get past any issues. Okay, these brick blocks have been there for a year. The structures have been there for over a year. There is no danger, in my opinion. Okay, we've looked at this before. I think this is a decision that was made looking for a reason and, uh, it's not right. These guys have put in a lot of effort and time and people like it. Why don't you ask some people if they want to stand up? I don't hear anybody, I don't see anything in the paper.
So I think everybody's in, everyone's in favor of the restaurants thriving.
Well, then you have to make it work.
But did the fire department, since you were there, they approve those cement blocks?
Yes, we, we talked about this. We talked, the whole fire department, the chiefs were here. If they had been at any meetings, you would have known that. We had public meetings on this. They meant, and the fire department discussed their concerns. The police department discussed their concerns. We worked around it. As Louis said, this is then.
Brian, these are temporary licenses, right?
I understand. That's how we put it.
Yes, and they renew it, I believe, every six months, am I correct, Mr. Gray?
Uh, I believe that was the time term, yes.
Okay, so this is the third iteration, this is the third approval, right? So apparently, the fire, the fire department is making an issue of this now. They didn't make it before for whatever reason, Brian. They're making it now. There's a responsibility as a board, as a new board to address this.
These, these, in my view, these licenses shouldn't have been, ever been temporary. It should have been longer term because we knew people were making investments, okay? So that was the compromise. Let's see how it works. We didn't know where COVID was going. They agreed to put up, they put up all the capital to do this. They kept things going. People like it, okay? So why are we changing something that was worked and has worked, hasn't been a problem?
Brian, I, I agree with you that, that we agreed to it and we wanted it. I don't remember having seen or agreed to this, the permanency of the structure. I am in complete favor, in favor of.
We had complete conversations about this, John. No, wait, John, because you're saying you don't remember, so I'm gonna remind you. It came in on our first extension. We had conversations and I wish Giuseppe was here and Louis can back me up. We had conversations, detailed conversations about this in public. And then we allowed them to build these structures just the way they are. That was what was done.
Mr. Swazi, can you, can you intervene and give us a little bit of background because you've been here, I think, longest?
As a matter of fact, Mr. Swazi was there with me, with the chief Moody, uh, with Giuseppe and we went all the.
I didn't ask you to speak. I want Mr. Swazi to speak. It's time to speak.
Okay, so first of all, when this first came up, these were unprecedented, unprecedented, uh, things we were doing when COVID hit. Uh, the police department, myself, DPW, uh, Mr. Stanco, Mr. Jamelo, we all went out there on Seventh Street and other places to try to make this work. Uh, we brought apparatus out to see if we had returning radiuses. Uh, we did our best effort. The issue about the fire department, um, approving this, um, they've never been comfortable with the Revel situation. They had issues originally with, uh, Waterzui and Ovita, but they brought apparatus out there and then you got clearances they were okay with. Uh, but the, uh, we did have drainage problems at Revel, which ultimately corrected. The board backed us and gave us where to all to get that corrected. The drainage issue at Revel subsided, although we still send DPW out there after rainstorms to clear the drains. Um, but the fire department, uh, Chief Crisco, the former chief, specifically and now Chief Moody, have never been comfortable with the apparatus, uh, being able to get through that, that space that was telling me blocked. As a former firefighter, you know, I, I know that access is important, visibility, uh, seconds count. It's a, it's a higher risk than when the tents aren't there. You know, you, you can't, you can't minimize the risk 100% from the baseline condition, which was no tent. I think that's something the, uh, the board and the, uh, village was willing to live with. Like Trustee Delaney's suggestion, if we could move away from the lane and put it in parking spaces, uh, you could have it best of both worlds. But I think the original legislation, uh, from the governor, it had to be concurrent to the building, had to be directly.
A liquor license, a liquor license required it to be within so many feet of the, of the building itself, not.
Right, so it made, it made, it made that, uh, impossible to Revel's situation.
Can I just jump in there for a second? The, um, new legislation that was passed, uh, and signed by the governor, I just want to let everybody know. It says it may make an application to the authority to use both contiguous space as provided for in the alcohol beverage control and non-contiguous space for outdoor dining. For the purposes of this act, non-contiguous space shall mean space that is in close proximity and in line of sight of the licensed premises, not wider than the edges of the licensed premises unless municipality, municipality has expressly approved otherwise and extending no further than the center cut line of a roadway and provides a thorough fair for pedestrian, customer and employee access. So it, it does allow for non-contiguous space at this point.
It didn't before and that was not yet.
That's correct.
Um, just a couple of points if you don't mind. Uh, there are no fire hydrants whatsoever on Calum Place, Calum Lane. So fires, I, I'm just fire commissioner for two terms. All fires that have been fought on any of those buildings, uh, on Calum Lane other than three sixty-five, the apartment building, are always fought from the front, from the Franklin Avenue side. The nearest fire hydrant is on Ninth Street between Plymouth Rock and, uh, Deepie Bank. So whatever you do to fight a fire there, that's where the fire hydrant is. That's in, so the parking lot by Revel, you can pull a truck in, you can pull it up. You can also come in Wolfstewart Avenue. There's only three orange upside down plastic garbage cans, I call them, barriers that are there. You can move them by hand. You could then drive all the way up to Revel's tent. It's only a forty foot head. That's the only spot you wouldn't be able to get to. But you could put a truck in there, but there's no hydrants in there. So this whole safety issue is way blown out of proportion, way blown out of proportion.
Chief Thornton?
The, the second item is, um, the drainage situation, uh, Mr. Duca put in a floating floor. He cut, we worked with Giuseppe, we were out there and, and, uh, Dominic, uh, to, to rectify, uh, all the situations there. He had to take up the floor, put in a, a, a lane so that the water would flow through. He did that. He's got about between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars sunk into what's physically there. So to tell him to move it is not possible. And as far as Waterzui and, uh, Nobita, uh, commissioner, hasn't been any, uh, traffic accidents going past there?
I'm not aware of any.
And, and there are buildings on Seventh Street, ninety-nine Seventh, which is your condos, uh, Plaza Seven condos, the Alexander House, one eleven Seventh, uh, Seventh Street. There is no access to the side of those buildings for the fire department. They can fight in the back, they can fight in the front, but you can't, there's no driveways that they can fit a truck in. So, and they're all stampede buildings. So this is, and any issues that the building department has, the drainage issue was solved, so. And if people are calling up because they think it doesn't look nice, I, I just don't understand how we can take a business that's been in all of these businesses that have been in the village almost twenty years each and, and tell them on a Wednesday night that they're gonna be discontinued on a Thursday night. I don't think it's fair to them. I don't think you treat them right. Uh, and I know there's more of them that want to speak. Um, so let me get off the stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I speak?
If I may respond to the comments we made.
Sir, Chief Thornton wants to speak.
Sorry, chief of the fire department has something to say. I apologize. Um, just to discuss the comment of the fire hydrants. Uh, not all the apparatus require a fire hydrant to go to the rear of the building. Uh, one of our aerial apparatus has a hundred foot ladder on the top of it. Uh, that does not require, but to get the apparatus closer to the building is more sufficient for us to operate. Um, in regards to the hydrants being far away, we carry up to a thousand feet of supply goes on the apparatus that we could hook up to the hydrant and be able to reach into the back of the building. Uh, other calls as well can include car fire, brush fire. Um, there are multiple incidences that can occur back there that we will not require a hydrant but will require the apparatus to be back there.
There's really access. Yes, this is the key.
I was just gonna ask if Mr. Ducas wanted to say something else in response because we're talking about Revel if perhaps he has anything, how we can solve this.
I appreciate that. Um, in reference to the so-called phone calls that they don't like the way the tent looks, ironically, two weeks ago, Revel made the cover of Long Island Explorer section of Newsday for the most exclusive outdoor setting on Long Island. So who made this phone call? A lot of you are anonymous. They don't have to give us that. They don't, it's not required. We still have to check it out. We still owe everyone this special. And then somebody made a statement, "Do you think you're big on Revel?" Yeah, I really do. I don't know where this comes from. I think it's a, it's personal, okay? Somebody has an axe to grind. I don't know what it is, but let me tell you about Revel, okay? We've been in this community for nine years. You can ask any business in this town, any church, any school organization, residents and so forth. We're not looking to just receive. We have given out in the last eight years close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in donations to support this local community. And I'm sure that Eddie and I'm sure that Ron at College Arrows and, um, Jason, Mighty Queens, we support. Okay, so you're talking about those cement barriers? I didn't place them there. The DPW put them there. Those aren't my barriers. They put them there so nobody could, I guess, drive through the structure or whatever it was. I didn't ask them. I'm, I'm dumbfounded, okay? Totally dumbfounded. And we, as business owners, even have to come here and, 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 and speak about this. Do you understand what we've been through with COVID? Does anybody understand that? Four thousand restaurants have closed in New York, okay? Another ten thousand are going to close because we were decimated. We was four months there, we didn't have a nickel of revenue, okay? We have families to feed. We have responsibilities. We have children to put through college. And here we are trying to defend ourselves after what we've been through? I mean, come on, guys. This is ridiculous. All of a sudden, these phone calls this week and like the gentleman said, what changed? This has been like this for a year. I, I put in every permit that was necessary, okay? That was approved by the village. It was approved by the fire department. It was approved by the, uh, Nassau County Fire Department. I did everything the way I was supposed to do it. For the record, you can go check it yourself. Everything was applied for, everything was approved. So why am I here? What changed last week? Or all of a sudden, these anonymous phone calls?
That's right, that's right. I'm sorry, we didn't get to speak with some people from the street, I'm a. We applaud you and I want literally physically applaud you.
Mayor, may I speak? Mayor, Trustee John, welcome to the Chamber of Commerce. I'll try to do everything in three minutes possibly. Um, I'm listening a lot and I walked Revel today. I paced it off, so it's not geometrically correct, but I did it as best magically as I could. Hundred foot ladder. I went down to the tent where the truck would have to stop, that Revel. That hundred foot ladder will go to the, the farthest window from that point of entry. So as far as you being able to access the building, because there are only four orange protective barriers preventing you to make the turn from Stewart into it. So your ladder would be able to reach it. Now, I may be off by a foot or two feet, certainly no more than that. So also keep in mind that when these, I, by the way, I came to every single trustee meeting, Mr. Swazi, can you vouch for that? I have not been coming in since COVID, but every single one, I missed none. John? The reason I'm emphasizing that is, is that there were things that the fire department agreed to. I watched it, I saw it. I think we're also missing something. They all had to get additional insurance as far as the liability for the village was. Yes, the village can be liable, but they all secured funding to supplement the Carrying Council to the insurance. So I think many things that I'm listening to here, I understand.
Yeah.
Let me finish. I do understand.
Okay.
Okay. I hear the building department saying, okay, well, we need calls and comments. Well, calls and comments aren't complaints. Can they migrate to complaints? Yes. But if I don't make it, I would see a last month, as you remember, hopefully. And I told you ten businesses closed, all right? And the persons or plural people that say, hey, you know, I don't like it, I mean, what happens? And Jim brought it up, what happens if we have twenty closed? You have a landlord, five hundred thousand square feet. We have challenges with leasing. I have been in this as well, all right? What would happen? Right now, secure tendencies is a very difficult thing to do. Collecting rents is a very difficult thing to do. So I think looking at this, and I'd like the other restaurateurs that took time to lose money to come here and speak, have the opportunity to do so.
to come here and speak, have the opportunity to do so. But I must implore you that we are charged with the economic development. I clearly understand your concern, your concern, your concern, your concern, your concern. I've got it. But as Trustee Menudo said, there's gotta be a way, a resolution, some modicum of activity that we can take somehow, some way to resolve it and keep these things viable. I mean, these people, not only, not only is it their livelihood, I know that I said this the last time I was here, is that people from other communities are emulating what we're doing. You know what? They're overcoming the challenges. Other communities have the same issues we do, and yet their boards and their building departments and their fire department are helping to get around the issues that make it more difficult to accomplish. So not only do I implore you, I think it's a necessity for the community economically to thrive. I also think that we're not looking at the other flip side of it. The other flip side of it is the residents. It's a safe, secure, for lack of a better term, better, healthy alternative, and the fear of what's happening with this new strain growing and developing. So I think these are all things that need to be taken into consideration. And again, as a board, I understand you're the new board, and I understand clearly, Mayor, when you said, well, the fire department may have an issue now. Brian said, and Trustee Menudo said, well, why didn't it happen in the past? Well, I'm sure there were issues that were discussed, but they got around it somehow. And it's easy to say, well, the fire department at this point says, and I'm assuming that's a major motivation as to why we're having this meeting. I'm sorry, why this is not the agenda of the meeting. But I'm sure there's a way this can be gotten around. And I can only tell you, I'm not a firefighter, okay? But I'm only telling you that if you walk the space, and you want to meet me and walk with the space with me, I believe that ladder could reach anywhere there. I truly believe that, okay? Just from a statistical standpoint of mathematics. So I leave it with that. My thought is, let these other people at least express themselves. I'm sorry, I'm very close to where I can be at the end of it. And again, we're charged, you asked me, I have one other thing, you asked me to do two things, you charged me with two things when I was here. You asked to poll the businesses, this is the poll. Not all of them, the people that don't like it, I already know, I didn't need to poll them. And the other issue is, you asked me about trolleys, okay? Or transportation because of the handicap issue with some people. I have reached out to different companies to make calls, et cetera, just to find out where and how it can be done. I've actually spoken to other communities that do it. I don't have enough information to give you. I will tell you one thing, it is costly, okay? Different licenses and requirements, insurance requirements that they all share. But it's something that we can take into consideration. And the vibrancy of that is, is that helps them even more than what we're doing now. So again, I implore you, we need the board's help. We can't do it without you, but we certainly don't want to fight you to get there. We want to work together as a team. That's really what we need. Thank you very much.
Quick question, when can you back to me on the mobility issue for the people who would like to participate in the winter streets?
Well, you asked, you know, I think one of the easiest ways to do it, not just.
If we're taking parallel paths, Ralph is looking to.
Okay, well, I think, I think one of the easiest things to do is, as silly as it may sound, what you mentioned was, I actually called the villagers in Florida, and they said to me, John, the easiest way to deal with it is golf carts.
Well, I mentioned golf carts.
I know that, but that's the easiest, most economical way. Easiest to insure, easiest to drive, because anybody can drive, you don't need a commercial license, okay? And you can some up winterize and then put roofs on them. So that would be the easy point data point bit. So if somebody has a handicap issue, the handicap spots are taken up, you have a car there, and perhaps one of the restaurant owners could have a qualified driver with a New York State license that acted, drive the person point data point bit back to their car.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Kevin Walsh, Forty-Two Hilton Avenue, Garden City, New York, speaking as a resident. I'm not a restaurateur. I've listened to the restaurateurs, I came down to support them in their effort to have the board not pass this resolution this time. I had a passion way ago with this, but it sounds like, and it was well delivered by the restaurateurs, they speak the best for their passion in the issue. I also sat there listening to the dialogue back and forth, and I was very happy to hear that new board members and all board members, you want to get to the right answer here. It's not a, it's not a design to hurt anybody, which I didn't think they would be, but you made it very clear that this is a good thing, the use of the outdoor dining. I know it's good for me, living in the village. I know as I drove in here tonight, I drove past the concert, saw people laughing and having a great time there. Made you feel good to be a resident. Drove into parking, parking lot, saw the restaurants in the back full outside with people enjoying a meal and laughing and enjoying the time. So I'm happy to hear that the board wants to work it out. And I think what I've learned tonight is, you're not ready to make a decision completely on this because you're a new board, you don't, you've asked the right question. What about insurance? What about fire? What about, how do we deal with these issues? I love your building department, they know I love them, but I don't worry about the maintenance items because I think their maintenance and policing items on the building department are concerned. Fire is a different thing, I think that's important. But I think that, from what I hear from both sides, both the history tells me and what I've heard tonight, those things can be worked out. They have to be tried to be worked out. So my suggestion and my hope is, the board will study this table and kick it into the fall. Do the, do the correct thing by analyzing it. If you really want to help the restaurants, and we all should, then get the decision correctly. You're entitled to look at it because it wasn't your decisions to begin with. And just because you have a right in agreement, because Mr. Gray's an good attorney, and he put in the agreement to make it your right under any circumstances, that's there because something could happen that you don't want to argue about. It hasn't happened. We don't have that incident, we don't even have that, it appears to be close to that incident. So don't pull that, and this isn't about whether we can or not, this is about whether you should this time. So I would just kick this out, study it. I'm not even telling you how long I'd let you go. Obviously, the fall's a beautiful time, nothing's forever. Take a good look at it and say, this is right for our residents and our business people. They don't, they don't vote, but they pay a hell of a lot of village taxes, and they deserve, it's how us all working together. We all worked together to get through the pandemic, and we wouldn't want to end it with battles back and forth about acting too hastily, so I'm hoping you can.
Kevin, thank you very much.
Mayor, they are providing a suggestion. I just found out tonight, and I guess it's my stupidity about the cement blocks. I thought that was part of Revel's setup, but obviously, it's not DPW. I'm wondering whether we could ask the fire department, Tom, to run some tests as to how far a ladder truck can go in there and how safe it really is. I'm not saying that the fire department didn't do its due diligence, I don't mean that in any way. But could we at least make sure that before we take action to stop something that the residents want, we want, if we can do it, that we could have the fire department take a look at that maybe over the weekend or within a short period of time and report back to us? The same holds true for the building department. I'm not really interested in what two or three people are complaining about. If there is a problem with garbage or trash or whatever, let's knock on the door of the restaurants and tell them, we've had complaints about this restaurant not keeping things the way they should be. I really want to see outdoor dining continue, as I think some of us do. But instead of guessing, and no reflection on Mr. Wilton, instead of guessing, let's run a scenario to see whether the fire trucks can get close enough to Three-Sixty-Five and can solve the problem. If they can't, we close it down. If they can, we make the necessary changes and go from there. Instead of battling back and forth.
I would agree with that, John, I think that's a great idea. Along with that, I think we have to very, study very carefully the liability exposure to the village.
I think we did that, Bruce, I think we did that, and my recollection is, and this, I'm an old man, so my recollection may not be as good as somebody else's. My recollection is that the insurance policies that we asked the restaurants to supply us covered our liability. We all know, and as an attorney, I know, I can sue anybody I want. That doesn't mean I'm going to be successful. But I believe that they have insurance that will adequately protect us if they have a trip and fall, if they have a stumble, et cetera. I'm more concerned about the fire aspect. I will not go along with anything that puts anybody in jeopardy, but let's at least let the fire guys try to see if they can do it. And I'm wondering, at this stage, it's over a year now that Emmett Place has been closed. So maybe we don't need those cement blocks there anymore. I don't know, I'm not an expert in anything, I'm certainly not an expert in that, but let's at least try.
Okay, John, just on that point, I'm sure they may have named as additional insured, but I think there's still an exposure because the structures are not within the restaurants themselves. And I think we need to look.
My recollection is their insurance policy's covered that. That is, am I wrong in that?
Okay, well, have you seen him, John?
I didn't see him, I see, but I think we agreed to.
John, John, we have to identify the timber of the structures because that's applying policy. So this is Kansas Public Trust, they say it's covered.
Okay, well, certainly, maybe, maybe they need to change their insurance and get that coverage. But let's, my thought is, let's give them an opportunity. If they can't do it, they can't do it, and then we haven't lost anything.
My, my, my only thought, and I want the restaurants to thrive, is safety. So as fire commissioner, I want to make sure that nothing's prohibiting you from handling an emergency situation at the apartments of those stores. So I want that looked into right away.
We'll do analysis and get that discussed, okay?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your opportunity, because tonight, I want to thank the restaurants on Franklin Avenue and Seventh Street Cafe.
Victor Scato, Seventh Street Cafe.
Victor Scato, Seventh Street Cafe, for almost thirty years, I'm Mr. Burke Scato, thank you. I want to thank the board and the village of Garden City for giving the opportunity last year and a few weeks this year that we recoup some of the money that we lost. I should hear from my colleagues and the people in the restaurant business. We went through hardship, and it was very hard for us to run our business, even though I was open and paying my employees, some of the employees that worked for me for thirty years. I had put a lot of money into it. The street closing, we were able to recoup some of the money. Last year and this year, it was a blessing. But I have to tell you, it was a bad decision that was made at the last minute when we were told that we could at least go to September eleventh. I personally sent a letter to this village, if you like, we'll read it to you, I spent twelve thousand dollars buying eighty new tables and seventy chairs, and now I have no use for it. Last year, I was able to borrow chairs from my restaurant, Chateau Bion, because we were closed, but this year, because we are open, why not? And spend twelve thousand dollars. Yeah. And also, I had entertainment that I hired and I contracted. And on top of that, we were blessed to be able to hire six more employees just for the summer. And for people in our beliefs and they could tell you, it has been very hard to get any employees because they're getting money from the government. But because we have no lot of people, and we reach out to a lot of friends, we were able to hire six people. If the street remains open and not closed, we have to fire these people. We have to let them go, we cannot afford a hardship. I think you should reconsider and give us the opportunity to get some of the money back. And I really appreciate what you did in the future, and I really appreciate if you keep continuing. I have one suggestion, and this has nothing to do with the people on Franklin Avenue. I don't know what the reason is that you made this decision, but if it was a cost, I have a solution, maybe a forty percent solution. You don't have to close the whole Seventh Street. I understand the labor, put barricades from Hilton to Franklin, Rob Westall, One Twenty-Six Seventh Street, which is Seventh Street Cafe. There is no restaurant that has put tables on the street, last year or this year. Forgive me if anybody's here to represent those places, please come up. If I'm wrong, if you close forty percent of the street up to the bank, the People Bank, you can save a lot of money, and also, you can be able to sit forty more cars. Lot of people say, there's no parking, there's no, but you can get forty cars on the Seventh Street and be able to cut through between the People Bank and Roseland Bank into the parking lot, go Hilton, and turn around. The other thing I want to tell you, I read something about that all restrictions were lifted. That's not true. I want to explain you why. Because in my restaurant, I lost thirty-seven chairs. It was my decision to do so because people are still reluctant eating inside. They don't want to eat inside. So I still kept a social distance in my restaurant. And I'm sure that all the other restaurants here are encountering some difficulties because people don't want to be inside. I had, on a street, I had three people walk out on Tuesday night out of the restaurant because my waiter was now wearing a mask, and he's vaccinated a hundred percent. So you have to understand that even though all the restrictions are lifted, people still do not want to come in and the restaurant unless they have a certain distance from all the other guests. So please would reconsider because we really need it. We can recuperate some of the money that we lost, and it would be nice for everybody out Seventh Street and up Franklin Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, for your studies. Roger Upton, running Meadow Street, past president of the Chamber of Commerce as well. These times it meant more to summarize and just some, I guess, some dental thoughts. It's clear that the original order to allow outdoor dining was temporary. We all know that, and it's been expanded a couple of times. So I don't think anybody in the restaurants here expects that this is going to be forever. However, I think that you really need to consider what they've been through, which they've explained to you. First of all, the capital improvements that they've put into all of these things is not without, there's no small cost. And it was done for a reason because they couldn't, nobody could eat inside thanks to New York State mandates. So they had no choice but to have those, have those structures outside, which I believe are included in the insurance purpose. Certainly within a hundred feet of the structure, of the rather structure, general liability policy.
The problem with that, Roger, is that they're on village property, on public property.
Well, the point is, so I understand, the point is that there is an additional insured village. All it is is a barrier, risk transfer, as you know. So the idea is that villages' insurance would be less likely to be accessed. But it could happen, that's. So the bottom line is, we're heading, we're going to head now into the fall again. We don't know with the variants what's going to happen. We certainly don't know what's going to happen to New York State and how they're going to treat things. And Oklahoma was still around, and you know how he is. So the point is, fairness would dictate to me that you should continue this probably even past the fall and maybe even into the early spring before you decide and come down and say, maybe it's not the time to have this, and maybe it's time to take those structures up. By then, we'll know about COVID, I think, more clearly than we do now. And I think, in fairness, you are a deliberative body. I think you have to consider all of the options. And one of the options is taking care of these people that have been through hell. And I think that certainly, I think going with the motion that you have on the agenda is certainly not fair to them or to anyone. And I think, take some time to consider it, debate it again, all the issues we discussed, fire issues and all that, a lot of those, I think, can be rectified. If there's housekeeping issues, I've noticed them myself. I'm a frustrated insurance inspector myself. So the point is, let's try and work it so everybody comes out looking good here. And instead of having this meeting, which I'm frankly sorry we had, but.
Well, I'm not sorry we had to do, I'm glad we had to do.
Yeah, well.
It exposes a lot of information.
Correct.
Some information that we had, some information that we didn't have. So now we can better address this, right, going forward.
Correct, so business is.
That's my point.
Business is better, but it's not great yet, okay? And so the point is, I think they need a little more time, certainly into the late fall and early winter, at least.
Well, the timing will determine the timetable.
Yeah, but that's my point.
We have to get some information rather than quickly, right? As I said, and I said before, there's some life safety issues that we have to address the board, right? That's our responsibility. So when I have a report from the fire department, from the building departments, probably what our report that they're ready to give, then we can address the board, the board with that issue.
I think that is a problem that could probably be resolved. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
If I may say so, to add to your comment, I find this to be a very productive meeting. So we're exchanging information and we're learning more as we go.
So we're exchanging information and we're learning more as we go along. And I'm sure we're going to find a path forward and a word for everybody. But it's a productive meeting, so I'm glad everyone's here tonight, giving their opinions and their thoughts and what they've experienced.
Mayor Trusty, I as well.
We're going to limit you to only two times.
That's it. I only spoke two times, and you were questionable last week. I didn't exceed you there. Be that as it may. We're talking about revocation, but at the end of the agenda, we have a discussion period for Seventh Street on Saturday night. So I'd like to address that because that's independent of what we're discussing right now. Somewhat collaborative, but independent. So one, I have.
Should we do this separately, rather than mixing the two issues and ask the mayor what direction he wants to take on this issue then?
No, I take very little offense.
Just so that we don't have people talking in different directions.
I agree, Mayor, this will not be confusing to the public or us. So I recommend right now, based on information that we need to receive from chief, fire chief, and from the Department of Buildings, a thorough analysis done very quickly, I mean, very quickly, begin with it in a week's time, right? They will table this discussion, right? And we bring it up at the next board trustees meeting in August. And we'll have all the information by then, we can make a decision.
So, Mr. Mayor, that normally, that motion there would normally be made when we get to the consent calendar, and somebody would make a motion to remove item number six on the consent calendar, and then there would be a motion to table and adjourn.
Do you do that now?
No.
Uh, no, you should do it when you get to new business on the consent calendar.
And now we know that, so we can move on to the other.
I agree. And I also, when you have the mayor, we have somebody on, and they would like to speak.
I'd like to speak as well.
We have Mr. Chapman.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Chapman, somebody will love. First and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge and applaud the board for having an actual dialogue, so thank you so much for that. It's a brush of fresh hair, and the fact that you can bring up an issue, but sit there and have an open dialogue and truly take it into consideration, I think it's five steps in the right direction, and I thank you for that. I have to say, as a business owner, not in town, I was deeply hurt by COVID, and as a resident, I greatly appreciate and I believe in our community. I've spoken to many businesses along Seventh Street and Franklin. I personally use the parking spots on Franklin, I use even the handicap parking spots of my daughter, and I am not that hurt, though I do understand we lose some parking spots. I am not that hurt when the streets are closed or when they do have those structures there. I personally like to go behind CBS and Water Zui and see those beautiful twinkle lights and go to Cal Giros and Rebel and so on. I do understand that it can be a fire safety issue. I ask the board to truly look at it because these businesses have gotten an extension several times and it was not brought up until now. It doesn't mean clearly that it is not a fire safety issue, but it was only brought up now, and I think businesses are willing to look into this and do, and take every step possible, and I ask that our town do the same. These businesses mean a lot to our town, especially because we've lost so many, and we see Franklin, we see Seventh Street, how many stores over there are empty, and we should do everything we can to help them and truly hear them out on this. So thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
Hey, sorry, can I just correct one thing that was stated there, just to make it clear for you, Seba? The, the fire department, of course, did walk through the structures several times at the points of the extension. It, it wasn't just an issue now. It's always been reviewed, which was the point.
Okay, thank you for that. But I, again, they brought some good points that I think it's worth to look at, and maybe it's something to look at each business differently, where they're located and their parking factors.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Hello, Karen, may I speak?
Yes.
Walter McCann?
Uh, yes, hi, good evening, Mayor, thank you. It's, it's good that you are having this discussion, and I'm happy to hear that you're moving it to next month to reconvene after gathering some information. I would like to just note that some of the things discussed tonight with regard to safety and code, as well as insurance, it's kind of, I'm not sure of the right word to use, but I know some of the, the things that have been discussed by the board are bringing these things forth and discussing before a decision is made. And it seems to me that a very hasty decision was made to put this on the agenda this evening and to set forth the things that have been discussed without having looked into what has happened in the past. And I do recall, obviously, in the first iteration when they were given the permits to do it, a lot of discussion around safety, the fire chiefs discussed it, the police, and all the, Dominic from the Department of Public Works. And then on the, I believe it was February, when they renewed the permits, there were safety concerns and drainage concerns, all of which were discussed for, I asked questions on it that night, probably about an hour. And all of those issues with these restaurant owners were discussed, in particular with Rebel, and mitigated very quickly. I think at the time, the mayor asked them to go out there the next day to deal with it, and they did. So we have businesses here that, you know, tonight could have possibly been in a really bad shape tomorrow morning. And it's, it's sad that all of these things weren't looked into beforehand, and when it comes to violations, you would think that they would be given, you know, fair warning about those violations and given time to, to repair them or to cure them, excuse me. So I would appreciate, you know, just as a resident, I think that's only fair. And when it comes to complaints, which by the way, sounds to me like was a big part of how this got here, complaints of, you know, how they had tents booked and, and different things, well, where are those people tonight? Why aren't they at the, at the podium speaking about those complaints? It's, it's sad that, you know, these restaurant owners are being put in this spot, and even if you push it out a month to, to get rid of these different things, you know, when we talk, we heard earlier, passionate residents talking about speeding issues on Cathedral, and we listened to the, you know, proposed plans to potentially fix it. How many complaints do you think the villagers received about that? Have we closed Cathedral or Everton? No. So we work through these things and manage them. I don't think a few complaints about restaurants, you know, just broadly mentioned without specifics should even be considered when it comes to the livelihood of these restaurants that are the lifeblood of Franklin Avenue. I, I think it's, it's sad, but I do appreciate you pushing it forward a month. I would, I would really hope that even if another decision like this is made, that it's really made after looking at all of the discussion that was had, and the previous commissioners, and everybody that approved the way it is now, to potentially mitigate the situation rather than just shut it down. I think that would be terrible. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, sir. Any other? You brought Zoom?
Anybody else on Zoom like to speak?
Hi, how are you? Running the energy calendar, there's not much more I can say that wasn't said tonight related by my fellow restaurateurs, but outdoor dining has kept me busy this past year. COVID devastated us, I don't know if we can make it through it. That outdoor dining structure has kept me alive throughout the winter, has kept us busy, has kept my toys paid, my rent paid, my lights on. So this really means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Hi there, Jason Womack, and I own Twins Barbecue, also on Franklin, and I actually opened during the pandemic, and outdoor dining, having that outside the restaurant was really what kept me going during that. It was really difficult figuring out how to deal with a lot of the incidents of COVID, opening a business during it. But even now, having outdoor dining available and, you know, the, the business that brings in, especially with having to remove some tables from inside, which frankly, even at this point, people still aren't comfortable, it's been a huge help. So I guess, you know, with the fellow restaurant owners, just ask you guys to try to keep an open mind and have a solutions mindset towards this rather than just trying to shut it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second term.
I go off, all right, I'll be quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you're all going to take this, but we're all being played, okay? No, seriously, things are going to get worse. With the COVID, the big corporations, they made additional trillions. This is the plan, it's a global plan. Now, just a second, you, just listen. TCBY, TCBY, the frozen yogurt store on Seventh Street, and all the businesses closing, okay? How come that place is still open? That place doesn't do any business, especially during the year. How come that, the other places, Food for Thought, Bagel Man, the deli, they have constant, constant, constant business. TCBY, okay, what I'm getting at is, try it again. Why do we have COVID, okay? Milk is for infants. Once you're over two years old, milk is a poison for the body that makes the bones weak. It becomes a plaque, it doesn't digest, it clogs up the kidneys. Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Which agenda item are you addressing right now? Uh, the, the restaurants and the closings. We have this being discussed, okay? So thank you. I got the message, I got the message. Thank you. Any other comments, please? Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you, the gentleman from the Commerce wanted to address the Saturday uh.
I think we're going to do that after.
Is there still on agenda items?
Yes. I want to close out. Best, best business, right? Next one of the business is the approval of the minutes of previous.
No, no, agenda items still, right? Agenda items?
Last, last comment, Brian.
Uh, on the agenda, actually, the casino lease, and I'd like to understand why we're doing this. What discussions have been made on this? Did anyone look at this lease? You looked at handwritten notes on the thirty-year lease. Is that, is that a standard lease? No, no, it wasn't. We looked at it, Brian, we looked at it very, very carefully, okay? Because I've seen the lease, I see, it's on the agenda, there's four handwritten changes on it.
It's actually a license agreement.
I know exactly what it is.
You're calling it a lease. So what is your question?
What, what was the discussion? How, how is a, this lease, this, forget the substance, the, the form of this lease, it's not a standard license, you can call it whatever you want. It's not, has no standard terms, and you're, what, how are you dealing with the repairs that have been made to this building? There were under $450,000 in repairs that have been made. Are you all aware of that?
So we.
Repairers have definitely made it.
Yeah. Uh, so how are you enforcing that? Because there's nothing in the lease about enforcing that, those, those repairs. Yes, my understanding is that there were discussions. I personally wasn't involved in them, but my understanding was that there were discussions, discussions with the people that owned the casino, and that they've agreed to make certain repairs. There's just an issue, I think, we have to work out with timeline for what those repairs will be made, and those will be addressed in a side letter outside of the license. So it'll be a timeframe and standards and enforcement mechanisms?
Yes.
So you're approving, but you're approving this lease now, so how are you approving this?
It's not a lease, it's a license agreement.
That's a name, that's a name, it's a name.
There's a difference, yeah.
Okay, you a real estate expert?
Who's that?
You a real estate expert?
Are you?
Uh, yes, I, I do leases all the time for my clients. And I, I'd be happy to take this to court and say it's a light lease, and they would be too.
All right, so.
It doesn't matter, that's just the name. Call it whatever you want. Let's get to the substance. How are you enforcing the repairs that have been made?
It seems that you're up here to make an argument over the casino, so.
Right, which is an agenda item.
Right. So as far as the casino, that is something we just had in the election, and that was one of the issues that was part of the campaign.
That was on, that was on the, on the ballot? I didn't see that on the ballot.
Okay, there were articles written, I wrote a letter to the editor, the, your, I, I understand, I think, your opinion on the casino from your letter that was on the front gate of the Garden City News.
Yeah.
But what we have heard is community support, and we are all in support of continuing this organization, community.
So it's your position that you don't need to enforce any requirements, standards about.
We will enforce, we will enforce.
How will you do that?
Doing the repairs.
How? You're signing the lease, that says nothing. How are you doing it?
The borough of the buildings will oversee any, any corrective work or any restoration to that facility.
And what happens if the repairs aren't made?
Then you can draw my.
License agreement will be canceled.
Think about the license agreement.
I have a strong advocate of a schedule being attached to this lease.
Okay, that's your argument? I, I understand that. There's nothing in this document being approved by you tonight that says any of this.
But, but the point, Brian, is that if we, on the advice of outside counsel, Fair Housing Council, we are moving forward with this licensing agreement, and we have negotiated and will finalize negotiations on a schedule that will be attached, that will require certain, that will require improvements to be made to the facility. If those improvements are not made, the licensing agreement will be canceled on a ninety-day, which we have ninety-day approval to be able to cancel the licensing agreement.
That's part of this approval process?
Yes.
And great, that's terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we want to the next item, which is your approval of the minutes of June seventeen.
Yes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of June seventeen, twenty twenty-one, regular board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move on to the consent calendars. Anyone who would like to move an item from the consent calendar for discussion on this thing?
I'd like to move item number six.
Are there any other items that need to be removed?
That wasn't actually me, I don't know what you're talking about. That's cool, though.
Mr. Mayor, were there any other items that needed to be removed from the consent calendar? That was the only item?
That's the only item we're removing.
So now I can, you can make a motion to accept and approve everything else on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, absent item number six.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now, item number six, the conversation to discontinue the temporary licenses, is there a motion to table?
I'll do that.
And adjourn.
I'll do that to table meeting. I'll second.
And ask to adjourn to the next board meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, now I think you're up to citizen comments on non-agenda items.
While the ready citizen comments on non-agenda items, please state your name and address, please. Sir, please.
Leo Simler, Huntington Road. Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting, did you say this is the last meeting that will have Zoom? This will be the, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. I think one of the advantages of the Zoom use is for elderly residents. It's hard to imagine. In the winter, it's dark. I hope you would reconsider, and I hope you would give some thought to continuing these meetings on Zoom for the elderly. It's dark in the winter for the handicapped.
It does seem to get dark. Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Non-agenda items.
So, I, the, 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 so we have to discuss the stage of Seventh Street. I think there's one other item. The information only item? Do you need that?
No.
Sorry. You would ask me and charge the chamber with taking some formal surveys, so basically what it was, we have, this is Seventh Street, and we're trying to now, independent of everything else we spoke about there. So this is Seventh Street members and contributors to the promenades. So all the businesses on Seventh Street, twenty-nine are contributors. There are ten non-contributors, and there are eight regionals and nationals whose corporate policy is not to make contributions to the local children. Meaning, nothing, Donnas, Chase, Roslyn, whatever the case, meaning that having spoken to them over the years, we've developed a successful insecurity and supporting them, so it seems to be their policy. So I'd like to enter this into the record.
And also, I'd like to enter into the record these ten letters from the different businesses, majority of them on Seventh Street, in support of continuing Saturday night. Some of them requested Thursday as well, but this one, Thursday has been no longer available. And I'd like to continue Friday and Saturday evening, at least until the end of the year. So I'd like to enter this into the record, and this into the record. Mr. Mayor, continues the request that you made of me to find out as much information as I could, and this is in support.
I'll take it. Are those the same letters we all got by email?
I think maybe, the majority of them, I think, was to agree that you did not pursue that yet. That concludes what I have for, thank you.
Orleans Kinesy, sixty-seven Hilton Avenue, one question again. Have, good evening. Have the windows, Tiffany windows been removed from same holes? Not yet, do you have an agenda?
The purchasing department is in contact with, uh, Mr. Beal from CNY. There's an insurance issue in play, uh, which we may have to go to the next lowest bidder, so that's, that dialogue is happening.
Do you know if the windows are still intact?
The one that is the Tiffany window is, I think some of the other ones, uh, which are not Tiffany, although they appear to be, um, some of them have had some pieces, uh, drop out.
Thank you, but it is in the progress of getting done.
Yes, it was, it's, it was awarded, but we have to have the insurance paperwork, and when we can't obtain it, we have to, uh, basically let that vendor go and go to the next one, so we're at that stage now. But there is email, I'm going back and forth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, Christopher DeBoer, owner and general operator of Leo's Tavern on Seventh Street. Um, with everything that's gone on tonight with Rebel and my fellow restaurateurs on Franklin Street, I almost feel a little selfish asking to keep Saturday nights open on Seventh Street. But I just want to explain to you how, what's the difference it makes to be able to put those picnic tables and those chairs outside and have families come down and let their kids run around and enjoy Seventh Street. I mean, I personally have met people from floral park and New Light Park and Rockaway Beach that have come to Garden City because they hear that the street's closed, you know? As a matter of fact, two Thursdays ago, I had people come to the dorm, like, what's going on? Why is the street closed? And I'm like, oh, they're not doing it on Thursdays anymore. They're like, oh, you used to have live music, a, as we did. And my, me and my partners at Leo's have tried everything we can to enhance the experience in Garden City on Seventh Street, on Fridays during the promenade and Saturdays. I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we bought a twenty-foot flammable television screen for the Islander playoff games that the, the, the town loved. And I'm not talking about twenty-two-year-old people outside drinking and acting like morons. I'm talking about twelve-year-old kids with their parents, sitting down, enjoying the game, and enjoying the Seventh Street, Garden City experience. So, like I said, I feel a little selfish asking for something when these guys are going through what they're going through, but I would like you just to consider, even just for the summer, if you could, keeping Saturday nights open, because it makes a tremendous, tremendous financial difference to us.
I appreciate, appreciate you coming.
And, and keeping employees employed through the summer. You know, I, I, we employ a lot of college kids that come home, a lot of Coll, Garden City college kids. And if the street's not open, I, I, I already told myself, I'm just not gonna need you. Like, Thursday night, we cut our staff in half. And I just want to thank you, just like first, uh, Garden City Town Hall meeting, and I appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you for coming. Um, so I guess that change, that finishes the non-agenda items, right? Now we're into the Seventh Street closure?
Comments on non-agenda items?
What?
Comments on non-agenda items? Brian Dodd, Eastern Road. Um, last week, we got a court opinion from, uh, MTA litigation. Suffice to say, the court didn't agree with anything the village wanted. Um, is anybody read the opinion on the board? Has it been passed around to anybody?
I've read it.
Yes, and I've read the opinion, and, uh, these, on the advice of our council, uh, we're not gonna discuss it too much. But yes, we did read the opinion. And, uh, a lot of, uh, comments that were made, I don't, wonder whether the judge really read through the whole lawsuit or not.
Okay. Um, I might have seen these, the MTA has sued the village regarding the Detonator Bridge permits, is that true?
They want to get a permit, yeah.
So they sued the village to get those permits?
It's under discussion with legal counsel.
That's not, that's not privileged, it's a public document, it's a yes or no. They have, it's a public document.
Yes, it's a public-
Are you all aware of that?
Yeah, I think we are, Brian, okay?
So I was just asking for, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little-
Not my question.
Okay.
So when is our response due on that?
I think we already made it.
Okay, and are you in settlement talks with the MTA?
We've been talking to the MTA and the other, a lot of things we have to clean up, Brian, a lot of things that, um, um, you know, that could have been taken care of a while ago, we're not. And, uh, yeah. Yeah, okay, fine, 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 okay, got it.
Okay, is the whole board engaged in the settlement talks? Is anyone aware of what's being discussed?
I'm very excited.
Legal committee, who is in?
Is that right? Anyone?
Yeah, members of the board, I, uh, since, since it's in litigation, I request that we not discuss it in public.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you know, this is not a privileged matter, this is just talking about where you are in the process. There, is there any further comments?
Excuse me, Kevin Walsh, forty-two Golden Avenue. The discussion before about the closure or the, um, breaking down of the businesses on the parking lot, I was combining my discussion with that with the, with the, on the other item on Seventh Street, I think for the same reason. It doesn't seem to have the fire issues or building problem issues, but the gentleman from Leo's, they run a very clean operation. He shouldn't be apologetic or feel guilty about doing it, he's trying to make his business survive. Um, I know Victor Scott's place is, is, is on there also. I think the correct request was, let us have the rest of the summer. I am the village attorney in three of the villages, we have downtowns, we're doing the same, the same analysis going on every one of them, and every one of them is saying, we have to figure a time, but let's kick it out through the end of the summer on all things, and then discuss what we want to do going forward. So, any comments I had relative to keeping restaurants thriving, I applaud it at this, thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any other comments? Any comments further on Saturday, Seventh Street? Because I, we've received a lot of letters, which, up reviewed, and I'm sure everyone else has too.
I, I'm in favor of keeping Seventh Street alive and viable for the restaurants.
I, I would agree, I was persuaded by a lot of the letters received. The opposition we had received from business owners had to do with people not coming to park. Um, but I did notice last Saturday, six-thirty, it was easy to park behind and get into the liquor store.
That has been the case.
So they tested it, and-
Mary, that has been the case throughout this whole, from the very beginning. Uh, many of the restaurant, many of the, the, those that on Seventh Street who complained, they're, they closed their businesses at five o'clock or six o'clock anyway.
And there was parking for some-
And there's plenty of parking down there.
Or shopping at the two businesses that I believe were opposed.
Absolutely.
That I heard from. Any other discussion?
Any other comments?
I agree with John, I agree.
I agree a hundred percent, Mary. I, I just, I don't, I don't think we should make any decisions based on, you know, basically, a minority of the businesses who are complaining about the parking. The other small detail, and I won't name, name names, but, um, you know, the, the people who were complaining were actually deemed essential businesses throughout the pandemic, uh, which restaurants were not. So, again, I'm all for helping them out, I'm, I'm all for being equitable with everyone. Um, and, and, you know, using all of the, uh, factors to make our decision. So I, I do agree with Mary and John.
I think we have heard from elderly residents that have had some difficulty getting to some of the businesses. Um, something to think about, I have, anyway. Mr. Gray, how we proceed now?
Um, well, I mean, if you're done discussing the topic.
I think there's no one else, is there anybody else in the other discussion?
Yes, so, go ahead, Sevan.
Hi, I'm, I'm so sorry, because I, I missed this a little bit, it's hard on Zoom. Would you mind just clarifying the licensing agreement that was discussed, um, with the casino? I know there was some comments before, if you don't mind clarifying, thank you.
Yeah, no, there wasn't really much discussion on that, except that we are continuing the, um, traditional license agreement.
And that was, I, I apologize, because I think someone from there said thirty years, but it was twenty years, is that correct, the licensing?
Twenty years, which is the same as what it was before.
Okay, and, and what was the comment regarding the ninety days?
There's a ninety, there's a ninety-day provision in, in the licensing agreement that allows the village to cancel the contract on ninety days' notice to the licensee.
Also, Sevan, if there's a termination notice for, for cause, they have a chance to turn that around and fix it.
That's wonderful, thank you, everybody, so much, thank you to all of you guys for doing that. That casino means a lot to a lot of people in this town, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I have one, one question, Walter McKenna, sixty-seven Hilton. Can you, uh, Mr. Mayor, please explain why you won't be having board meetings on Zoom anymore? Because during your campaign, all five trustees from the Fat G C party, uh, made a strong point that all meetings should be online, because there's so many people in the village that can't come in person. So can you kind of elaborate on why a decision was made to take them on Zoom? Or maybe you have another plan to put them on another media, I don't know, but can you kind of elaborate?
Well, we were discussing this with the, um, the village clerk. And the village clerk recommended that we suspend this action right now, because, uh, there is a suspension of COVID. People can come to the meetings, we want people to come and actually speak with us if necessary. And if there's a big outcry for the company, we'll restate it. Sir?
Actually, um, when you were, uh, convincing your campaign, well, it was never discussed as part of that problem, so why is it now being used as an excuse?
It's not an excuse, sir.
I think there's always been, uh, an argument that if you want to be interested, you have to come to the meetings. I think we've heard that for the last year, I think we just heard it two minutes ago from the ex-trustee. I think you should make it as easy as possible and view a meeting place as not twenty-five people or fifty, but hundreds of people. So I think Zoom just makes it very easy.
I agree.
Then that's, that's, that's one of the residents' opinions.
Well, I can give another one. I give my opinion.
Of course.
Arlington Avenue, sixty-seven Hilton Avenue. I'm eighty-two years old, and I can't always get out here, especially in the winter time, when there's ice on the road. So please keep Zoom. I love, I love being here, I love coming to the meetings, but this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we love having you. But definitely reconsidering.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, if you're not gonna take any acts concerning, uh, Seventh Street Saturdays, um, I think you're at the point of an adjournment.
Yes. Is there, is there nothing else, ask for a motion to close the meeting? Thank you. Hold the favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, you're wonderful.